Welcome, everyone. I'm calling the special meeting of the first 2020 to order. All council members, staff members, and members of the public are participating by teleconference. This council meeting is being conducted pursuant to provisions of the Brown Act and a recent executive order issued by the governor to facilitate teleconferencing to reduce the risk of COVID-19 transmission at public meetings. Ordinarily, the Brown Act sets strict rules for teleconferencing. The governor's executive order has suspended these rules. The executive order does require that we continue to notice meetings in advance. The city has met all of the applicable notice requirements. As noted in the agenda, members of the public may observe this teleconference meeting. Members of the public may offer public comment by email to cityclerk@cuppertino.org prior to the close of the public comment period for the agenda item on which they would like to comment. The city clerk will share all such comments with the council at the meeting, subject to the time limits applicable to public comment, and make them part of the record. Alternatively, members of the public may offer public comment orally during the teleconference. Members of the public requested to send an email to cityclerk@cuppertino.org ahead of time if they wish to display any attachments on the screen. Because we are not all in the same room, all votes at this meeting will be taken by roll call. Like all city council meetings, this meeting is being recorded. Now, I would like to ask the city clerk to proceed with the roll call.
Councilmember Chow?
Here.
Councilmember Sinks?
Here.
Councilmember Willie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Here.
Mayor Sharp?
Here. I also want to point out, we did not do the Pledge of Allegiance. We won't do it during teleconference meetings. Before we get into ceremonial matters and presentations, I would like to report out on our closed session. Item one, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, Government Code Section 54956.9D, possible initiation of litigation under Government Code Section 54956.9D4. Counsel gave approval to initiate litigation by joining a coalition of cities and counties. Once the action is formally commenced by the coalition, filings, defendants, and other particulars will be disclosed to any person upon request as provided in Government Code Section 54957.1. Item two, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph three of subdivision D of section 54956.91, Claim Clean Cut Landscape Incorporated (CCLI). Counsel gave direction to the city attorney's office. No reportable action was taken. Okay, now we are on to ceremonial matters and presentations. We have one item. It's a staff presentation on Rosenberg's Rules of Order. We're ready for the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Heather Mener, your city attorney. I'm going to share my screen now with the PowerPoint presentation. So this presentation will provide a brief overview of Rosenberg's Rules of Order, which the council recently adopted to govern city council and commission meetings. I'll discuss the procedures we're considering an agenda item, basic motions and the order of the vote on them, special motions to control debate in the meeting, and a few points on courtesy and decorum. The presentation is about 15 minutes long. Mayor, would you like to provide time for questions at the end, or I can address questions as they may come up throughout the presentation?
If possible, let's hold them to the end, but if somebody wants to interrupt, that's okay.
Very well. So why do we have parliamentary rules of procedure in place? Mainly so that people know how to participate in a public meetings and to make meetings more fair and democratic. And sometimes procedural rules determine the substantive outcome. I'll start with a trivia question. Does anyone know what the six ordinance ever adopted by the city of Cupertino was? Well, I'll tell you. It was an ordinance passed in 1955 adopting Robert's Rules of Order as the parliamentary rules of procedure for city council meetings. And that was specifically the 1951 edition. Now, Robert's Rules are useful if you're running a formal parliament, but they are pretty cumbersome for a five-member city council meeting, not to mention the fact that I haven't found a 1951 edition yet. So in February of this year, council enacted a muni-code amendment and a resolution naming Rosenberg's Rules of Order, rather than Robert's Rules, as the governing rules of parliamentary procedure. Rosenberg's Rules of Order provide a simplified version of Robert's Rules, and were designed with city council and county board meetings in mind. For instance, Rosenberg's is just eight pages long, whereas Robert's is over 800 pages. So Rosenberg's Rules are practical, logical, simple, easy to learn, and user-friendly. And they don't cover everything, but they cover most situations that you'll see. To start a meeting under Rosenberg's Rules, you need a quorum of the members. Usually, this is one more than half the body. For the city council, this is three members. And the quorum must remain to continue actions during the meeting. Rosenberg's Rules include a basic format for discussion of an agenda item, which is consistent with the city's current practice. First, the chair clearly announces the agenda item number and subject, and any special procedures for considering the item. For instance, if there's a hearing for a land use development project. The chair then invites appropriate persons to report on the item, including any recommendations they may have. Usually, this is a staff report, but it could also be a report by the chair or another member. The chair then asks members of the body if they have any technical questions or clarifications of staff. And the chair then invites public comments. And afterwards, the chair invites a motion to begin discussion and determine if someone seconds the motion. Now, a second is not required to begin discussion, but it helps determine if more than one member is interested in an item. In Cupertino, there's a practice of beginning debate on an item without a motion, but Rosenberg's includes a motion first. And next step is to make sure everyone understands the motion by having the chair, secretary, or the maker repeat it. The chair then invites discussion of the motion, and after the discussion, the chair calls a vote and announces the results of the vote. In Cupertino, the practice is to have the clerk, the city clerk, announce the results. Now, motions generally require a simple majority to pass. Note that even if some members are absent, the Cupertino Municipal Code specifically requires the votes of at least three council members for passage of all ordinance resolutions and orders for payment of money. Now, motions are vehicles for decision-making. The chair usually initiates a motion by inviting members of the body to make a motion or suggesting a motion himself or herself. These are the standard motions for considering action on an item. The basic motion puts forward a decision for consideration. A motion to amend takes the basic motion and seeks to change it in some way. And a substitute motion is made if a member wants to completely do away with the basic motion and put a new motion before the body. Substitute motions and motions to amend are often confused, but they are different. A substitute motion seeks to throw out the basic motion and substitute a new and different motion for it. A motion to amend seeks to retain the basic motion, but modify it in some way. There's also a convenience procedure called a friendly amendment. When a council member seeks to slightly change the pending motion to win support or make it more desirable. The member suggesting the friendly amendment, the member suggests the friendly amendment, and if the maker and the person who seconded the motion accepts the friendly amendment, that now becomes the motion on the floor. There's no need to vote on friendly amendments. But if either the person who made the motion or seconded it rejects the friendly amendment, then the other member can formally move to amend the motion, and that motion to amend requires a vote. Now, there can be up to three motions on the floor at the same time. More than three motions at a time can create confusion. The chair can reject a fourth motion until the chair has dealt with the three that are on the floor and has resolved them. When there are two or three motions on the floor at the same time, the vote should proceed first on the last motion that is made. Let's go to an example. So here, the first motion is the basic motion. A motion to have a five-member committee to plan an annual fundraiser. The second emotion could be a motion to amend, to have a 10-member committee. And the third motion would be a substitute motion. For instance, a motion not to have an annual fundraiser at all. The voting order would proceed from the last to the first. So first vote on the substitute motion. If it passes, then the basic motion and the amendment are moved, since this was a substitute motion. If the substitute failed, the second vote would be on the amendment. And debate on that motion would adjust on whether to amend the original motion. And then the third vote would be on the original motion, either amended or not, depending on the last vote. Now, Rosenberg's Rules includes a section on motions that limit debate and discussion. Generally, all motions are eligible for full discussion and debate and can continue as long as the members of the body wish to discuss them. However, there are exceptions to the general rule of open debate. The exception applies when there is a desire of the body to move on. These listed motions are not debatable. This means when the following motions are made and seconded, the chair must immediately call for a vote without debate. The first is a motion to limit debate. It expresses a desire to end debate and move on to a vote. The common form is to say, "I move the previous question. I move the question. I call the question." Those types of motions. It can also be a motion to limit debate to a specific time period. For instance, "I move to limit debate on this item to 15 minutes." The chair can treat this call of the question as a request, rather than a formal motion, and ask, "Is there any further discussion?" If no one wishes to have further discussion, then the chair can go straight to the motion. But even if one person wishes to discuss the pending motion, the chair should ask for a vote on the motion to call the question. This requires a two-thirds vote of the body to end debate. So a council of five members would require four votes to end the debate. The other motions listed here just require a simple majority to pass. A motion to table requires discussion of the agenda item to be halted and for the item to be placed on hold. It can be continued to a specific time to come back. For instance, tabling the item to the end of the meeting, but it doesn't have to. A motion to recess requires the body to immediately take a recess, and the chair determines the length of the recess. A motion to fix the time to adjourn requires the body to adjourn the meeting at a specific time. And a motion to adjourn requires the body to immediately adjourn to its next regularly scheduled meeting. Rosenberg's Rules also includes a section on courtesy and decorum. Now, it's up to the chair and the members of the body to maintain common courtesy and decorum. It's always best for one person at a time to have the floor and for a speaker to be first recognized by the chair before proceeding to speak. In fact, Cupertino Municipal Code codifies this in a section about discussion procedure. It provides that during discussion, council members have a duty to remain seated and address their remarks to the chair and their fellow council members. Any remarks to the audience shall be addressed by the chair or with the chair's permission by the members of the council. Rosenberg's Rules urges council and commission members to focus on policy and not personality. Debate on policy is healthy, but debate should not get personal. The chair has the right to cut off discussion that's too personal, loud, or crude. And Rosenberg's Rules also encourage concise debate. The chair may limit the time allotted to speakers, including members of the body, in the interest of time. Now, interruptions while another member is speaking are generally not allowed, but there are some exceptions. For instance, interruptions by saying, "Point of privilege relate to comfort of the meeting." For instance, "It's too hot. It's too loud." And the chair would then ask, "State your point." There's also point of order, and anything would be considered appropriate that would not be considered appropriate conduct of a meeting, like the chair did not allow debate of the motion. For appeals, the chair of the body is charged with running the meeting and applying the rules of conduct. But if a chair makes a ruling that a member of the body disagrees with, that member may appeal the ruling of the chair. If the motion is seconded and after debate, if it passes by a simple majority vote, then the ruling of the chair on the procedural issue is reversed. Call for the orders of the day is when a member believes that the body has drifted from the agreed-upon agenda. No vote is required. The chair simply reminds the body to stay on the agenda topic. And interruptions can also be made to withdraw a motion. Now, that concludes my presentation. If anyone would like more detailed overview of Rosenberg's Rules and practice with hypotheticals, Judge Rosenberg himself has a 50-minute presentation, which is posted on the California League of Cities webpage. And you can find it by Googling "Rosenberg's Rules League of Cities." So that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any council members have any questions or comments on this?
I have a question. Great, thanks. So I have a question. My first question is about limiting debate. And I want to clarify if I heard this correctly or if it was covered. So a motion to limit debate or call the question currently requires a two-thirds vote. Is that correct?
That's correct.
What would we need to do, since we have five people and two-thirds is a supermajority? What would we need to do in order to turn that into 60% of the members present?
You need four members to limit debate.
I understand.
Right, but to modify Rosenberg's Rules of Order?
If we wanted to modify our procedure such that three out of five or 60% are required, how would that be done? Would that need to be done through resolution, or would that require an ordinance change?
You could do it by modifying the resolution that established Rosenberg's Rules of Order. There is actually also a procedure in Rosenberg's itself to suspend the Rules of Order, which I believe requires a two-thirds vote itself. And so you could do it on the fly during the meeting that way. Otherwise, you could amend, the council adopted a resolution that establishes Rosenberg's Rules of Order, and council could amend that resolution to clarify the limiting debate voting thresholds.
Okay, and then a resolution would require a majority, correct, in order to achieve that? I thought it was a great presentation. Do you have plans to make this an annual presentation?
The council requests it. I could.
Okay. How many substitute or amended motions can be on the dais at any given point in time?
The chair can allow three, and then after that would work through the motions.
Okay, is there any requirement that a substitute motion be made after an amended, an amendment motion?
No, it could be made beforehand.
Okay, so it could be a three, so it could be a motion and two substitute motions, or a motion and amendment and a substitute motion, as well as in two amendments. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Thanks very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anybody else want to ask anything? I don't. Oh, Kirsten, do any members of the public wish to comment on this agenda item?
Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
Hello, hi.
Okay, go.
Okay, so we can have at most three motions on the table at a time. But then, would that count the motion to limit debate or table or recess? If there is already a motion, amendment, and substitute motion, that's already three, can someone then enforce another motion, which will be the fourth one to limit debate?
That would be up to the chair.
So that would be a fourth one. So this motion to limit debate would be counted as one, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And that is a motion that must be acted on immediately. So you would take that motion as its name.
So it's up to the chair, do you mean after the three motions, whether we can go beyond fourth motion? It's up to the chair to decide, or? It's not for the council to vote on, whether to go beyond three? It's the chair that would decide?
Yes.
Okay. But if there were only two motions on the table, and then a motion to debate would be the third one, then that would not need the mayor to decide?
Yes, you would then decide that motion immediately.
Okay. Okay, so I guess we need to practice this. And so the council members should address the chair, not the public? I think that's something we usually don't follow. It's all, we are all facing the public, and then we are supposed to be talking to the mayor who is next to us, we may or may not see.
It's customary to say mayor through the chair and then respond, and the chair sort of nods, and then you would respond to the public. So it doesn't mean that you can't talk to the public, but you would usually request the chair's authorization to do so.
Wait, I think usually, especially when we are voting on something, we want to specify our position. We would be talking to, I guess, the fellow council members and the public. The reason I support this or not support this is this. So are we supposed to be addressing the mayor only when we are stating this?
The idea is that you're addressing your fellow council members and the mayor, and of course, you're doing so in a public forum, so that you are also...
Not just the mayor. It's okay to address the fellow council members also.
Yes, yes, it is.
And then sometimes, we also ask staff to answer questions, especially during a staff presentation, we ask clarifying questions. Should we address the question to the presenter or just to the mayor?
Typically, the mayor would recognize the council member, and so you'd say, you know... Or he would invite questions by council members, in which case you could ask staff questions directly.
Yeah, so the question would still be addressed to the presenter, right? It's just we are recognized by the mayor, which is always the case, right?
That's correct.
So I don't see a case when we actually only address the mayor, except when maybe making a motion.
Right.
Right? Usually, we will be addressing the fellow council members or the presenter. So the only time we will be addressing only the mayor is when we are making a motion. I want to clarify that, because I was confused. To be addressing only the mayor all the time.
The Municipal Code says council members have a duty to address their remarks to the chair and their fellow council members.
That's the Municipal Code. That's not the Rosenberg's Rule?
The Rosenberg's Rule says it's every speaker should be recognized by the chair before proceeding to speak.
But the Rosenberg's Rule doesn't have this additional thing that's in our Municipal Code that council members should address the chair and fellow council members?
It overlaps, I think. And another thing to keep in mind is Rosenberg Rules are not regulations. They're rules to guide your procedures, and it's often common for council to have that doesn't strictly follow every single step.
Okay, so our so our adopted ordinance, which was adopted in 2018, I guess, was the Rosenberg's Rule, but not only that, there were some additional things on top of Rosenberg's Rule. So what other things we have modified on top of Rosenberg?
You have your Municipal Code.
That's not in today's, actually, that's not included in the attachment of today's agenda.
No.
Right, this was just a presentation.
Can the staff provide us a summary of what our Municipal Code have beyond Rosenberg's Rule, so that I'm clear which part is just Rosenberg, which part is on top of that, which I think it was staff recommendation at the time. The council in 2018 didn't really go into detail about this. So I want to clearly understand which part is Cupertino-only rules and why we are adding those.
Yes, I can provide that to you.
That would be great. Okay.
Okay, is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Possibly, we have one of the callers waiting on hold to speak on this item. So if anyone is calling by phone, I'd like to request that you... So if anyone is calling by phone, I'd like to request that you press star nine to raise your hand right now and we can allow you to speak. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone, so sorry, you may proceed.
Okay, so that ends our ceremonial matter and presentation. Madam City Clerk, are there any postponements?
No postponements, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, then we are on to oral communications. Have we received any requests for oral communications?
Yes, we, Connie Cunningham would like, is waiting to speak and she also has a presentation that I will share with my screen.
Okay, I think we're ready for her, so you get three minutes. Welcome Connie.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Just a second.
Kirsten, I'm not, or Madam Clerk, I'm not sure that's the right presentation or the right.
I, Connie?
I think it is.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
You take it down for a minute, I wanted to speak and then maybe at the end, if that's appropriate, you can put it back up, but right now that, that wouldn't work for me.
Okay.
I, I'd like to just go ahead now, can you hear me? Yep.
Yes, go ahead, I'll start the timer.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council Members, City Manager and Staff. I'm Connie Cunningham from the Housing Commission, but speaking as myself only. I want to thank all of you for your service to our community while we are under a shelter in place order to help flatten the curve of this COVID nineteen pandemic. This morning we heard that the order has been extended to May thirty-third. During this time, many actions are happening at the federal, state, county and municipal levels to stop the surge of COVID cases and to limit the financial impacts on people. In spite of all that is being done, nonprofits still need donations from people like you and me to fill the gaps that happen because each person's case is unique. And I am speaking to all the people that are here, not just the mayor and vice mayor and so forth. I use my time today to ask you and all who are watching online to give generously to those who are serving our neighbors and friends who are in fear of losing their income or their homes or both. And also for those who serve homeless neighbors, many of whom have nowhere to shelter in place. West Valley Community Services is located in Cupertino and provides those services to our Cupertino friends and neighbors. I am a regular donor to West Valley Community Services and I know their work. Can you make a commitment tonight to click on this link in your browser, which I will tell you, and give generously? It's HTTPS colon backslash backslash WWW dot W V community services dot org backslash donate dash now dash COVID nineteen, no dash in COVID nineteen. So I will repeat that because I know it's kind of long. But if you could make a commitment tonight, because this is out from April third to May third, so two rental periods will go by. Make a commitment tonight, HTTPS colon backslash backslash WWW dot W V community services dot org backslash donate dash now dash COVID nineteen, no dash in that COVID nineteen. And I want to thank you so much, stay healthy everyone, thank you.
Okay, thank you Connie. Madam City Clerk, was there anyone else for oral communications?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have Jiang He who's waiting online to speak.
Okay, welcome, we're ready.
Yes, hi Mayor and Council Members. I think the, I mean, the previous speaker already mentioned that we are about COVID nineteen and I think this is a really unprecedented emergency situation that we are living in. I'm just wondering what the city, this is a kind of more of a question than, and just kind of sharing ideas rather than specific idea, I mean, the requests that I have to the city councils. But I'm just wondering what kind of the actions that the city is taking to ensure the public health, I mean, especially Cupertino, the citizens living in the Cupertino for their safety, I mean, their public health and the safety. I mean, right now everyone is staying at home, but if, I think this will have tremendous consequences, economic and social consequences and aftermath. And I think there, there could be more the public safety issues coming up and I wonder how the city is preparing for. And also how is the city preparing for its own matter? Like what kind of resources it is preserving to be prepared to, to reach out when the need comes from? I mean, from everywhere. So I'm just wondering what we can do and what the city has to be done. I mean, I think it is not a normal time, we cannot just stand sitting in a, in a sense of normalcy, but we have to be more in the emergency mode to preserve everything and focus on solving this problem. So I'm kind of here to get some comments from the, the councils if, if the time allows.
Okay, so we, we don't comment on oral communications because it's not an agenda item, but later on in the meeting during council and staff comments, the city manager and other staff members can comment on what the city's actions are. And I know that there, there was a mailer, I got it today, I don't know how many other people got, got it in the mail today. But I'm sure our city manager will have a copious amount of comments when the time comes in the meeting for that. Is that true Deb?
Can we have the city manager just respond right now? Because we don't want people to wait until the very end for the important message from city manager.
Well, we'd have to have a motion to modify the agenda to, to allow that. I'm perfectly willing to do that.
I'll make the motion because I think it's best served, you know, having the city manager's comments with the request.
Okay, so the motion should be to move council and staff comments, but not future agenda items.
Might I suggest that we finish hearing the public first?
Sure, yeah, but, okay. Madam City Clerk, were there any other people for oral communications?
So it looks like we have one additional person. I want to remind anyone who's waiting to speak under this item, please press star nine if you're calling in from the phone. And while we're waiting for that, I do, Mr. Mayor, have three emails to read from the public.
Okay, but that was a good point, thank you Rod, I, I should have thought of that. We'll do the motion after we finish oral communications. Okay, so who's next for oral?
So this is from Joseph Fruin, Mayor Sharp.
No, 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 I mean, was there someone else waiting to speak?
Well, I haven't seen that person raise their hand yet, so I just wanted to remind anyone waiting to press.
Yeah, remind them again, it's star what?
Star nine if you're waiting on the phone only.
Okay, yeah, I, I'm looking, I don't see it, okay. All right, welcome, okay, you can proceed to read the email communication.
This is from Joseph Fruin, Mayor Sharp and members of the city council. As the city continues its efforts towards providing relief for renters through West Valley Community Services, I again ask that you mobilize the full capacity of the city through its public relations channels, including its retained PR consultant to publicize where and how residents may connect with resources. Many residents are unaware of the programs offered through WVCS, other charitable organizations and/or government agencies. That lack of knowledge may swiftly compound the significant human misery already occurring in our city and neighboring communities. The city's coronavirus page is a good start. That said, nextdoor.com postings daily indicate that many residents remain unaware of key legislation benefiting them, such as the county's COVID nineteen eviction moratorium. The city of San Jose has elected to distribute postcards to help inform the public. As you review the monies available in the budget for the city work plan, please consider where you might fund not only for renters assistance, but also the funds to help inform the public where they can find the help they need. Many thanks, please stay safe, dear Fruin Cupertino resident. My next email is from BG. Dear council members, recently I looked at the budget report in our city's website and learned the city's main sources of revenue are sales tax of thirty percent, occupancy tax of eleven percent and property tax of twenty-eight percent, aggregating approximately six to nine percent. I also noticed that forever y twenty twenty, the expected revenues are one hundred and forty-two million and expenditures are higher at one hundred and fifty million. And the city is transferring eight million from reserves to balance the budget. We are going through an unprecedented healthcare situation in our county and businesses in Cupertino are closed for an unknown period and there is economic uncertainty at national level that could lead to a recession in the coming months. So I reached out to Ms. Alfaro about how the city of Cupertino's financial situation will be affected this year and next. We still have a quarter left in this fiscal year and revenues will likely decrease in sales tax, occupancy tax and property tax for this and the following fiscal year. Based on the reply I received, the city has nineteen million in economic uncertainty reserves to dip into if the revenues fall short. I was referred to read the budget balancing strategies in budget report and some of the cost-saving measures include furloughs, staff reduction and reduction in contingencies, among others. When revenues fall short, there might be difficult decisions for the city council to take in the future. So I request the council to think long and hard if you have to spend or allocate another additional dollar for non-essential work at this time. The city has to be fiscally responsible and conservative at this uncertain time. It would be great if the city council brings forward an interim report on the financial impact to the city due to COVID nineteen for the current fiscal year and for next council discussion and public awareness. Thank you to the city manager and staff for regularly updating the public every single day on the status of COVID nineteen. Stay safe, thanks, BG Cupertino resident. And I have one final from JJ. Dear respected clerk, please forward to the council during the oral discussion. Received a letter from the law firm regarding the current situation pertaining to the family home. The attorneys got what was demanded even under our objection. In addition, they evaded our court service request for a neutral third party resulting in the city's use of the same biased employees for the inspection. We were refused the right to talk to the Cupertino city manager. Apart from the attorney's unprofessional conduct and the excessive legal fees, they have caused additional financial burdens resulting from unnecessary paper filings disregarding our request for information. They are totally using tax dollars not to help residents when a city service is involved. For many years, we received no local services since we were not part of the city's service list, city's slow adapt former county area. Being subj, being subjected to the laws of Santa Clara County, but to abide city code to pay fee to torn down the buildup, causing more burdens, local commercial businesses are not subject to tactics. All of these costs would be abated and the complete legal interrogatory should be thrown out of the court as we were shot down, any requests without any legit reason, lacking any input from Cupertino city residents, H family, elder and young. And that is all I have for you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and the person that was waiting to speak, I guess, has not raised their hand. Is that true?
The hand is still not raised, so the name was Roger Jensen.
It was what? Oh, I see Roger Jensen there, but.
But I don't see it have raised hands, so perhaps it's for another item.
I see, okay, very good, yeah, I do see him there as well. Okay, very good, so now we are done with oral, can we have a motion to modify the agenda? So the city manager can provide, I think just staff comments for now.
I, I make the motion to provide for those staff comments and save the others for later.
Okay, that's, that should be sufficient, sure, I'll second that, all in favor, roll call.
Aye.
Kirsten, can you do a roll call, unmute yourself, okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Oppose?
We need a, we need a roll call.
We need a roll call because, yeah, you have to do a roll call.
Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so thank you, that, that was a good suggestion and Madam City Manager, would you like to provide the feedback on what the city has been doing in terms of COVID nineteen? And also mention how we're reaching out to outside sources to try to work on a plan for assistance?
Sure, let me focus my, my comments in about three buckets. One is what we're doing with city facilities and what we've done there, what we're doing with other cities and what we might be doing on a communication, from a communication standpoint. So city facilities, if people have not noticed, are all closed for public use unfortunately right now. We have taken an advantage, the advantage of time to do deep cleaning in each one of those facilities so that when we do reopen, they're all free of, of any kind of lingering bacteria or whatever. It's all deep cleaned via our janitorial service. And then there's a few of us at City Hall that come into work every day, as essential workers, to carry out whatever actions that we get that are changed from the day-to-day orders from the county. That's what we've been doing lately is because things are changing so rapidly, we, we have, we take a lot of time during the day to interpret new orders such as the one that came down today and how it might affect current operations. So let me now move to what we're doing, I forgot my second bucket already. But my first bucket was city facilities, my second one is planning, advanced planning. So at the beginning of all this, I declared a local state of emergency, I believe it was on, on March eleventh and ratified by the city council on March seventeenth. While it didn't do a whole lot in terms of actual emergencies, emergency things that I have to do, it does open the possibility of additional resources and being able to move about a little more freely when reacting to an emergency. We have been meeting as an emergency operations center, virtual, of course. We've been meeting twice a day, every day for the first two and a half weeks approximately. And then we've been meeting three times a week, starting late last week because the changes were not as pronounced. Some of the things that we are currently doing are coordinating with other cities, ensuring that we are in line with what the county direction is, ensuring that we're getting enough information in terms of how we should operate from both state and county and actually being aware of any resources that may be coming available either from the state, the federal government, state and how it flows down to county. Many people will go, could go to our Cupertino website. We are, we have a COVID nineteen webpage and we have one both for residents to keep everybody updated. I believe along with any kind of resources that might be made available to assist them. We also have a section for businesses. Many of the amounts of money and assistance are coming for small businesses because they're the ones suffering the most right now. So we have our Economic Development Leader, Manager, working with small businesses, for example, to fill out the Small Business Administration loan and financial aid paperwork. And she's reaching out to other businesses as well in order to gain assistance. She's also working with the chamber and reaching out to Rotary. The other thing that we're doing is we're doing a daily update for COVID and as people who are paying attention to those can see, we had a lot of changing information at the beginning of those and they are starting to become a little more bite-sized, but all of that information is also posted to our website. But when we get new information, we do push it out to Facebook and Nextdoor. For those, um, that are, uh, able to get print, we have, um, printed and delivered, uh, how to deal with COVID. There's a big card stock kind of flyer that has all of our key city phone numbers, um, links to websites, um, narrative that describe what you should be doing to take care of yourself. Um, and we also recently published the scene that was COVID specific with more instructions and more hopeful, helpful information such as phone numbers. And we have been, um, also communicating, communicating over email, uh, where it's appropriate. Um, with regard to support for people that, um, are being, have, are housing insecure. Um, we have been, um, supporting West Valley by talking to other city managers and other cities that the mayors, uh, will be, uh, involved shortly. Um, on a strategy, a more long-term strategy on how we support West Valley as our community service nonprofit organization that helps our, the residents in the West Valley cities. I believe a meeting of the city managers is currently being scheduled by the lead city this year, Los Gatos, for this week. And then at the same time, we're reaching out to large businesses to, uh, to see if we can compel or talk to them about donating to West Valley directly. Anytime the city does not have to handle the money, it's a better thing. It's just direct to West Valley. And so far, um, Apple has contributed or committed to, um, to West Valley a hundred thousand dollars for renters assistance. Other than that, we do have a lot of things in motion to help the community. Um, I want to pay particular attention to our, um, our senior center has been staying in touch with all of its membership. In our recent, um, daily updates as well as the scene, as well as our items, items of interest, we have published phone numbers so that seniors can access the senior center even if they're not members to obtain, um, support. Uh, for example, we, uh, learned that there were about fifteen seniors who were, um, foods, needing food and connected up with West Valley in offering our staff services to actually pick up food and deliver. Um, so there's a lot of connections going on to try and help the community through this rough time. And, uh, I've been answering emails as best that I can throughout. Um, but that's what we've been up to. Um, so it's been, it's been super busy. Um, and in addition, we are, we will probably, and I can't tell you when we'll do this, but obviously it's going to be relatively soon. We'll be bringing to council what I call a recessionary budget profile. You'll hear me talk about this in one of our items on the work program today. Um, but things are changing very quickly. Um, so we are looking at, uh, the current budget situation as well as its implications for fiscal year twenty twenty one. And if there are any questions or comments, that's a quick summary of all the activity.
Could you add Via Shuttle?
Oh, yes.
Serious about that, yeah.
Yes, so obviously during this shelter at home, uh, order, um, ridership has dropped greatly. We were really progressing well and uh, the ramp up was, it was very popular. So I was very encouraged. So we are down to one or two vans, depending upon a demand and scheduling. Um, we have, uh, uh, gotten those vans so that they only take one rider at a time and for, um, social distancing requirements. And after each ride, the van is wiped down by the driver with, um, alcohol wipes and other sanitation um, equipment. Um, and what that's, those shelves are designed to do right now is there are folks in our community who uh, can't drive and need to either get to essential places or essential appointments. And so what I didn't want to do was cut them off, um, and leave those people without an alternative. Um, so, uh, I was heartened to see that the recent order that I just read through that, uh, got published this afternoon, um, actually talks about enabling, uh, shuttle services so that people can get to essential appointments in central places like grocery stores and doctor's appointments, um, who don't drive or who otherwise don't have a care provider that can drive them from, uh, any, from their home to any location they need to.
So Deb, uh, regarding Via, if you have two members of the same household, what is the logic that they're not allowed to ride in the same van?
Uh, you know, I have to follow up on that because they should be able to if they're from the same household. Say, uh, say somebody is, um, say a couple is going to a doctor's appointment, um, they should be able to go together.
Right, yeah, I would be interested if we could modify the, uh, order just to fix that.
Absolutely.
Okay, does anyone else have a raised hand on Deb's report? I don't see anybody.
I see one now, Connie.
Oh, okay, yeah, I guess, uh, it is an agenda item, so people can, uh, speak orally. Okay, uh, yeah, welcome Connie.
Wanted to thank, uh, Deb and the entire staff for everything that they are doing. Thank you.
Okay, that was good.
Thanks, Connie.
Uh, anybody else, uh, Kirsten?
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Um, so we are on to, uh, let's see, where are we here? Reports on committee assignments. Does anyone have any, has anyone been to any committee meetings on anything?
The staff report is I've been to all COVID committee assignments since the beginning.
Right, uh, and I've attended many, uh, of the county's COVID calls and tomorrow, one with, uh, one with White House and Dr. Fossey, which should be interesting. Um, although that's not a committee. Uh, I guess I am considering I'm on the, uh, urgency operations, uh. Okay.
Oh, I'll report out on my meeting.
Sure, go.
On March ninth, the, uh, County Housing and Community Development Committee, uh, has invited Cupertino to sit in on that, um, on that series of meetings. I believe they take place on a quarterly basis. Uh, and, uh, essentially what it is, is that, uh, they are a, uh, collective of the county entities that uh, process CDBG funds primarily for, uh, cities that have less than fifty thousand in population. Uh, there is a function for us being there in Cupertino as part of the county's committee. Uh, it simply wasn't, uh, effectuated at this last meeting. Um, but we're on the committee now, so I guess that's good participation. Um, and then on March twelfth, the VTA PAC was canceled. Uh, however, on March twenty sixth, the Silicon Valley Regional Interoperability Authority uh, did hold a teleconference and conduct their regular business there. That's it.
Okay, anyone else? It's hard for me to see all the raised hands because, um, I can't see all the participants at once. Um, but seeing no one speaking, we can move on to consent calendar. Madam City Clerk, did anyone wish to pull anything? I would like to pull number nine and, uh, let's see, I guess it's, I guess it's just number nine.
I have not received any emails and I do not see any commenters.
Okay, did any other council members wish to pull any items?
Uh, I do, but I will move items five through eleven.
I would like to pull the item for February twenty, the minutes for February twenty fourth meeting.
Okay, I will move items number six, seven, eight, ten and eleven on the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Member Chow.
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks.
Aye.
Councilmember Willie.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul.
Aye.
Mayor Sharp.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, um, so Councilmember Chow, you pulled item five.
Yeah.
Welcome.
So that was a discussion for the work program and, but the minutes only said the council gave input. That's all. There was not, um, description of what input the council gave. So I think we, the minutes should be action minutes. However, any thing, any direction that the council gave at that time, we did, um, have majority consensus on some of the items that was integrated into the work program. So that should be in the minute. And even, uh, items that were proposed by some council members that did not get majority support, that should still be recorded as action is not taken. Um, so I, I believe Kirsten has revised minutes, but I haven't seen that yet. So.
Councilmember Chow, they, they were included in this amended agenda.
They say searchable packet, but then I couldn't find it.
If you click on the link for that agenda item number five, the minutes, the updated minutes are included.
Agenda number, it's only in the searchable minutes. It's not in, um, online?
It's online as well, yes. So do you have the agenda in front of you? Uh, it's also in the meeting details online on insight as well as in the digital archives.
Because, so online, if I go to agenda number five, all I see is draft minutes, right?
Yes.
So where am I supposed to find the?
The attachment, attachment A draft minutes.
So draft minutes is already revised?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
It was provided in this amended agenda that we posted yesterday.
Oh, okay. Oh, I thought, oh, I thought that's the old one. Okay. Because in the searchable packet, I still see the older agenda, the, the old minutes. Okay. The council provided following inputs, council reviewed, public engagement. Yeah, that's good. There are a lot of more details there. Thank you. That's great. Yeah.
Great.
Okay, so, um, before.
Yeah, so let's keep this practice for the future minutes.
Okay, um, let's look at item nine before we go back and, um, prove the other ones. Um, so I, the only issue I have with this is we're trying to, uh, what did you call it, Deb? The recessionary budget? So I'm just wondering about, um, is this the time where maybe we, it's okay to fall behind on pavement maintenance? Realizing that it's going to cost us more money later? Roger, can you, uh, comment on this?
Yeah, I'd appreciate that. Good evening, Council. Roger Lee, Director of Public Works. Um, so this really, you know, Stevens Canyon Road, um, from Ricardo going up towards, um, towards the reservoir. Um, we just found that we've got quite a bit of failures that are occurring up there. And if we delay, the failures are just going to continue to, um, uh, to accumulate and cause even more costs in the future. So this is a situation where we're trying to wait and not spend the money now will, will result in increased costs later.
So why is the, uh, why was the original contract not sufficient, um, with the included contingency from before? What was the contingency in the past?
Uh, it was about a two hundred and fifty eight thousand dollar contingency. Um, we've spent about all but fifty one thousand of that, uh, mayor. And so the cost to do this work is, uh, about two hundred and two thousand, I believe. So that's why we're asking for a hundred and fifty thousand more dollars. As far as the reasons why, when we, when we quantified this work, um, because it was, it was, uh, this project was awarded back in February of, um, of last year. Um, so it was quantified probably in late twenty eighteen. We had about five thousand square feet of failures and unfortunately, that's just been the, the rate at which these failures have been growing.
Okay, you said this is on Stevens Canyon Road between where and where?
Well, I always think of it as Ricardo. Uh, that, that's really sort of the first street as you're going down from the reservoir. Um, but yeah, just, just, just as you start to enter into where it turns into foothill, going up, up, um, you know, west or south to the reservoir.
Okay, and that's all in our city, obviously, right? Not, this is not county.
Absolutely. We don't, we don't go all the way to the reservoir.
Okay. Okay, well, I mean, if we have to do this, uh, we have to do it. It's just, uh, trying to recognize our precarious financial situation right now.
Question?
Sure.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just wondering if, if we do let it go, what sort of cost? I mean, would we have catastrophic failure of the road and then, I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm with Stephen, uh, at heart in, in wondering, right, about things, um, it, maybe making, deferring some decisions until we see how things shape up here, but, um, you know, one thing that, that would mitigate this is if, you know, a catastrophic failure would result in a lot more money, uh, that would be, that would certainly be worth, um, taking into consideration. Can you comment on what, um, you know, if we were to let this go for six months or so, what would happen? Or what, what you imagine could happen and what the cost might be if we had a catastrophic failure, if that's, if that's what you're visioning? Thank you. I'll take my, I'll take, uh, the comments off the air here.
All right, yeah, because the, the, the area has grown almost, uh, almost five X, uh, from when they were quantified, say, a year or so ago. And, um, you know, we went through this winter, um, not all that much rain and if we don't get all that much rain now, perhaps it wouldn't continue to grow and, and, and cause a safety issue, but it's not, it's not something that I would, um, that I'd recommend. I, I, I would rather propose, uh, you know, saving some dollars somewhere else, but I would, I would, I recommend getting these dollars into the street to, to stop.
I'm sorry, but what is growing?
The, the, the failures in the street. So, you know, what was five thousand square feet a year ago is now twenty thousand square feet.
Okay, um, Councilmember Chow, you had your hand raised.
Yeah. Hi, I, I, so this is a stretch of road that's used by the truck from Stevens Creek Quarry early high cement. Are they, may, maybe contributing to the deteriorating condition from five thousand to twenty thousand square feet? Is it possible they can contribute to the cost? And so that's first question. Second is, uh, right now, is this project ongoing? Is this considered an essential, um, project? And, uh, the third one is construction cost. I think in the past couple of years, cost has been high. However, maybe the cost would be lower right now? Would we possibly see, uh, lower cost of construction for this project? So that's all.
Okay, um, yeah, so this, uh, Stevens Creek Quarry is, is what's adjacent to the reservoir. So there, there is a lot of frequent and heavy truck traffic going up and down Stevens Canyon. Uh, as far as them contributing for it, that, that is something that's being, um, investigated, um, between Public Works and the City Attorney's Office. Uh, in terms of cost sharing on that, but there, there's nothing in place, uh, on that now. Um, maintenance of our roads is considered a, an essential facility, uh, so it is, um, I, it is within the, the order for us to do this type of work. Um, you know, to your question, could we get a better price, uh, on this work, um, uh, elsewhere? Um, you know, it, it is possible. I mean, it is over two hundred thousand dollars worth of work and that, and that would be an option. We, we could let this, uh, let this work out, um, you know, separately on a project of its own. But because we did get a price from the, the current phase one contractor who, who we're under contract now. So that would be an option and, and, you know, we would just put it out to bid and see what would happen. I would prefer that than not doing, not, not trying to do the work at all.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Willie, you have your hand raised.
So, um, my question pertains to just trying to better understand what the required repairs are. You know, trying to visualize what it might be, but you know, who's to say I'm right or wrong? Are we talking about, uh, cracks in the tarmac and preventing water from getting underneath? Or are we talking about chunks of tarmac that are actually gone? Or are we actually talking about, uh, the roadway actually kind of sliding away? It seems to me when I looked at CIP projects, uh, a year ago, uh, Regnard Road had an item saying that, uh, the road was It seems to me when I looked at CIP projects a year ago, uh Regnard Road had an item saying that the road was. In jeopardy of kind of sliding, you know, to what degree, you know, what what is it that we really need to be uh repairing or maintaining? In the future, a picture or two would really help. Thank you.
Okay, um yes, you're correct. Uh with Regnard Road, that was, tho- those are different types of failure where the 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 slopes were insta- in in not stable. These are stress failures in the wheel path where the trucks are at. So so they're um, they're like alligatored where all the all the cracks, both horizontal and and um. Longitudinal, they're intersecting like a um, like an alligator uh crack. And um, you know, once that happens, the rate of failure, it 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 just increases uh uh quickly, especially when there's more weight put on it and and you have water from from wet weather. So tho- that's the type of failures that we have. Um if it if it continues, you know, those those intersecting cracks are going to start to come come loose. That's where you start having potholes, and then that's that's where you just have a rapid failure of the street. That's and that's what we're trying to get ahead of.
So Roger, what's our, and the city attorney as well, what's our ability to have weight limits on our roads?
Well, I I believe they're they're regulated by the by the vehicle code. Um I don't think we can, as a city, we we can't go lower than what the vehicle code would allow, but maybe He- Heather could have more to add on that.
I'd have to look into that specifically. Um there are uh limits on what cities can do to regulate use of roads. Um but we can look into that.
I I do know this is a, you know, obviously, it's a designated truck route.
Right. I mean, it's, you know, the trucks are destroying the road and our residents are paying for the repairs, which seems not right.
And I will note also that, you know, we are actively involved in in reviewing and commenting on applications by the courts to the county and, you know, addressing these issues could be part of that. Going forward.
Okay. So I mean, Roger, I trust you when you say we need to do this, so um. You know, I I'm willing to move for move items five and nine.
I'll start with that.
Okay. Um so we have a motion, a second. Um Kirsten, can you uh conduct a roll call vote?
Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, great. Uh I guess we have no second readings of ordinances, is that true?
That's correct.
Okay, so we are on to, and no public hearing, so we're on to ordinances and action items. Item twelve, consider participation in and funding for the Santa Clara, Santa Cruz County's Airport Roundtable on Aircraft Noise in the South Bay. So I've been attending these meetings, even though I am not the uh alternate or the primary. Because they occur at one P M. In the afternoon, when people that have full-time jobs have to work. And I actually can't go to these either because I have another meeting that same day. Every time the meeting is held, although I cut one short to go to it. Uh in any case, is Andy Jordan on the line?
Yes, she is, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, first let's do, first let's do our staff report, and then we'll have Andy speak. So do we have a staff report?
I don't think we do on this one.
Oh, okay.
I think it was a discussion, yeah, discussion.
Okay. So, okay, before Andy speaks, I'll say I I I'm torn. I'm unhappy at the way this these meetings have been conducted. The time of the meeting is disrespectful to the public. Other air aircraft roundtable, airport noise roundtables meet in the evening when the public can participate. And when it's easier for council members and other elected officials to participate. I am upset with the way the chair disrespects the residents that come to speak, often cutting them down to sixty seconds of uh. Of communications on agenda items. And I I don't like the amount of money we're spending for facilitation. It's over two hundred thousand dollars a year we're paying to a part-time facilitator. That said, I, when I was in Washington a few weeks ago, I met with the F A A. Not as an official of the roundtable, I was not authorized, but we did talk about things that could be done to mitigate aircraft noise. So I I'm really not in favor of pulling out, but I really would like. The Cities Association to work on making some changes to the roundtable, to uh have a time that's more convenient to residents. To follow the Brown Act, which this was very upsetting. There's multiple violations of the Brown Act, and it was not just in one meeting, i- it's continuous. So I think you almost need an attorney there to keep it on track. Um but that's all I have. So Andy, would you like to speak? Um I will, let's see, where's Andy? She's still there? I don't. Ah, okay, oh, on you, you? Okay, uh, welcome.
Great, thank you. Oh, I have to switch.
Yeah, there, that's good. We see.
Okay, great. So uh mayor and council members, um thank you for including me tonight in your meeting. Um I just wanted to give you a brief little history and um just to remember how we got here. The roundtable, I'm in two thousand and in July one of two thousand and seventeen, we received. A formal request from our uh congressional uh members. From Representatives S U, Kana, and Panetta, and they asked us to uh form a roundtable or to find a a recommendation. Uh to forming uh to form a roundtable. Uh this was to um address community concerns, and also it was a um a formal action from the Select Committee that had been set up in, I believe, two thousand and fifteen. So the Cities Association in August, uh they voted to uh to to form an ad hoc committee, and the members of the ad hoc committee. Uh included Palo Alto, Mountain View, Saratoga, Los Altos Hills, Cupertino, Sunnyvale, and Morgan Hill. Uh we looked at all different ways that the roundtables were um all across the country, were how they were formed. But we had some interesting issues with our roundtable in that we were going to be serving two counties and two and two airports. We looked at um, the ad hoc committee created bylaws and M O Us, and they were based on the S F O roundtable. They created a funding formula. Formula by looking at the amount of money that other uh roundtables um were spending. Uh the timeline, so you can see, um it actually was kind of a quick timeline, um considering that um there were very few staff people involved in. In pulling this together, um myself, and then there were staff people from various cities that helped at different um at different um. Uh points within this timeline. So you can see in July two thousand and seventeen, we received the requests. And in October of two thousand and eighteen, the board voted to form a roundtable, and that was after receiving input from jurisdictions in. Santa Cruz County as well as Santa Clara County. November two thousand and eight, we put out an R F P and uh we made it, we had, we did interviews in two thousand, December of two thousand and eighteen. And um uh hired uh E S A, who is now the consultant. And just to note that E S A was uh the only uh only submittal that we received. Um that had actually been involved uh and run a roundtable before. They also have a stellar stellar reputation um in the country, and uh so we had our first meeting in February two thousand and nineteen. And then in August of two thousand and nineteen, we extended funding for another six months. Um the challenges that remained before are still still exist today, who will lead a roundtable when no jurisdiction or airport wants to take the lead? While we did adopt um uh, while we did adopt the M O U and bylaws from the S F O roundtable. It, we can't really adopt their their function unless one of this uh the county, one of the counties or one of the cities want to take over. They actually employ the the administrator for the roundtable. Um and so they're they're, the way they staff it is a little bit different, and so that is one of the challenges that we've had to lead. And in order to get it up off the ground, we chose to have a consultant slash facilitator, and that was. Part of our R F P process, and that was what we defined that we needed. Um and so the staffing continues to be an issue, and uh I hear, I hear the members loud and clearly, and the members will of the roundtable will have to discuss this about. In Santa Clara County about about other options that we may uh that we may do. To try to bring those costs down so that we would have more money for technical support. And then also the meeting time for thirteen jurisdictions um at an available venue. This was actually much more difficult than I had anticipated. Evenings that were available are uh Friday nights and uh and the only day was Wednesdays, but the only time that we could get um a meeting location was Wednesday afternoon. And so we have had to um uh, we've been at the mercy of our hosts who often have meetings before and after us, and so they slide us in for maybe a three-hour time chunk. Or um for um usually about three hours, and so we've had to sometimes abruptly end our meetings. But you can see, we've created a place where citizens can go and um have questions. Um our um website that has a lot of information. And this is um kind of a breakdown of of the things that the roundtable has done, and um. While I know folks are frustrated and wish we had moved forward on 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 other items, uh we did. Finally reached conclusion on creating a strategic plan and a work program that will now guide us. And if you can see by this chart, that process took a little bit longer um than we had anticipated. Um here, you can see the work program took um. It took five meetings. And then the strategic plan um also took four meetings, so that process took longer than than we had uh anticipated. This is the budget. We're keeping, we're holding the budget flat. Um the first budget was actually a ca- calendar year budget, um because that's just the timeline that. Is what happened with uh when the board adopted it and when we were able to get going, and so then we um, the roundtable then approved a six-month budget. Amendment so that we could carry it through the fiscal year of um into the end of June, and so this is asking for. What what you're considering today is a proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget. Um we're going to hold it flat. Your uh your contribution would be the same previously as what it was before, and that's seventeen thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety-nine cents. Um for many of our jurisdictions, it's actually cheaper than what they've spent on consultant time um on this issue. Um and our goals remain the same. By creating a roundtable, we have created our jurisdictions and our citizens a venue for um. To work with the F A A. If you're an individual city or if you're an individual citizen, you cannot, um the F A does not want to talk to you, and this is one of their. By 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 participating in a roundtable, it's it's one of their sanctioned um ways that they will work with you. Per the bylaws, the roundtable is to become independent. Um the Cities Association is just helping get this off the ground. So and our goal is still to bring all the stakeholders to the table, including the airports. Currently, we have S F O, but they're not a full member, they're not a voting member. They they don't contribute at this time. I mean, our our goal would be to have so that they contribute as well. And uh and our goal is still to to find a better way to determine staffing and funding. So with that, I will um, I'm here to answer any of your questions.
Okay, um I did want to point out the who's missing from the roundtable is San Jose and the San Jose Airport. And when I met with the F C C, uh sorry, the F A A uh a few weeks ago, they were telling me, oh, in um. In Massachusetts for Logan Airport or Massport, they call that area, uh they're working on a new dispersion program. Where they can spread the flights out like it was before, where the noise is not all over one community. They said, all you got to do is have your airport request this. And I said, well, therein lies the problem. Our roundtable doesn't include the airport, and they were kind of shocked about that. So I just want to ask Andy, what would we have to do to get San Jose and San Jose Airport to join this roundtable?
Well, we've been working on it. We're still having conversations with them, but I think that all of our communities still have to. Try to keep the lines of communication open, and I think that if San Francisco joins the roundtable, I think that I think that San Jose will come along. The event, you know, but we just have to, we have to show them that we're willing to work together, and um I just think it's going to take a little bit of time.
Okay, um that's all I have. Anyone else uh have any 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 raised hands about this?
Also, just it uh mayor, if I may, um address that you brought up the Brown Act issues, and um I am aware of two instances of the of a Brown Act issue. They were remedied immediately, and um I'm unclear, the first one was kind of a big one and um, but it was remedied immediately.
The second one was not remedied, the one that I was aware of.
The second one, the uh I think that they was going to be remedied at the end, but we got kicked out of the room, so it it um. The meeting had to end abruptly, and so. Members did get up and speak. Um I again, I'm uh, it does happen, and then you remedy the situation, but I would not describe it as a um ongoing problem.
Okay.
They're both unfortunate events.
And and regarding the facilitation, I've talked to several members, and they say, we hired this facilitator for all this. This relatively high amount of money, and then they said, we have to redo the work they do because it's unsatisfactory regarding the work program and the um. What was the other?
I I think that I think that the people, I I don't, I I actually don't believe that everyone felt that their work was unsatisfactory. I think that a few people that signed up for that committee felt it was unsatisfactory.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um anyone else from the council wish to uh ask any questions about this? I see Liang Chow, uh Councilmember Chow, you have your hand raised.
Hello, hi. So I understand that this facilitator comes with great experience. What of his experience and most of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is used to pay his consultant fee, right?
Correct.
Did you say how much it is per meeting um for the two-hour meeting, and then what exactly that he has provided with experience that makes a difference? Because from the couple ones that I have attended, it doesn't seem to be such a. I cannot see the value, but maybe I wasn't there. So can you speak on that?
Um sure, am I um?
Yes, you're up.
Okay, all right. Um, hold on here. Sorry about that. Okay, um so this is, this is the um, you can see the the table, correct? Did I successfully share my screen or not?
Yes, we can see.
Okay, great. So you can see the I F P gateway, that's an example that is presented. Um uh, that is, that is all technical work.
You maximize the slide because it's kind of.
It's hard to say.
You are, you need the presenter view, not like edit. Right now, it seems you are in a view where you can edit the slide.
Is that better?
Better.
Yeah, much better.
Okay, sorry about that. Um. So if you can see the um uh noise one oh one, um loop five. Uh I think the air traffic one oh one may have been done by the F A A. Pirate two was done by the FAA and, um, also by our consultant. And then the work program and the South flow program, uh, all, I mean, all of this he has had his hand in and he has done. But because we have so much time in the IFP, um, I'm sorry, in the work program and the strategic plan, he has not done as much technical work. But now that we have gone and created kind of a program for us to move forward, you will see, uh, you will start to see more technical work from him. And also, you know, we were bringing, we're bringing, we're bringing jurisdictions together from, from two counties where some of the communities are greatly divided about this topic. And so we're bringing all of these people in a very educated and a very passionate citizenry to our meetings and, um, trying to find common ground where people start to trust each other. It just doesn't happen immediately. You're just not going to have a meeting and tell everybody, okay, let's take on a big topic and make progress. I mean, it takes a while for everyone to learn to work together. So, um, um, uh, Councilmember Chow, I also believe that you attended a few meetings at the very beginning. And, um, and it did, you know, it, it takes, it takes a while for everyone to gel and to figure out. The first meeting you, um, I think, believe you were at the first meeting where a chair was elected. And when the chair was elected, I mean, she did not know she was running a meeting that day. You know, we had had conversations with people that, names that we had heard of who are being nominated to prepare them. But you know, it, so that, that it's kind of a rough meeting.
Okay, um, Councilmember Singh.
Thank you very much. I, I know it, you know, when we got the request from our congresspeople to stand this up, it was a, a daunting task. Um, I think we, we did it in, in my years president of the Cities Association. And, um, it's, it's hard to say no. I think it's, it's really hard work. Obviously they, I think the congresspeople did it because they said, you know, this is how the FAA works with communities. Uh, so, so I get that. I think, you know, you have certain residents who live directly under the flight paths of these planes. As of now, the, the precise control, precise repeated control, you have, you know, planes that can be coming by, uh, more than one a minute. If you happen to live under the flight path, I'm sure you're quite upset and wonder why we can't go back to a, a prior system where the paths are dithered or, or by some means, uh, varied so that you don't have to suffer. So I get why the congresspeople would like us to, to work on this. And I'm, I'm generally, uh, supportive of continuing. But I, I do wonder, right? Whether at the end of the day, uh, this is going to, we will see some movement. And, and I guess my, my question to you, Andy, is if, from, from the prior, uh, group that got together and prepared a, a set of recommendations that was chaired by a Semidion, has the FAA acted, uh, to implement the recommendations that this big group has come along with? Do they have a timeline for, for doing so? Are we just speaking to an administration that frankly doesn't care? Or an agency that independent of, of who's president doesn't care? So I'm, I'm wondering, I mean, what I've heard anecdotally is they haven't implemented any of it. And it's been what, three years since it, it, that committee concluded or something like that? Maybe you can refresh my memory.
I, um, I would, I'm, I'm not the most, a best person to talk about it technically. Or, um, but I know that they're still waiting on a lot of, um, the recommendations, um, from the select committee and for them to be implemented.
Have they implemented any of the recommendations that the community came up with?
Yes, I believe they have.
Okay, all right. That's encouraging.
The, the congressional offices and, um, uh, Tom Pike from Congressman Connor's office could not come, could not join the meeting tonight. But he wanted us to express that, uh, they still feel this is the best way to move forward. To, uh, to try to see if, if year two, and if we can, uh, get more movement ahead. And, and they're self supportive of us, uh, trying to make this a go. I think it would be better if, if, if we could get the airports on, onboard, and I think they will eventually.
Okay, um, yeah, I think from my conversation with the FAA in Washington, it's, without the airports onboard, it's unlikely the FAA will take the recommendations that we want seriously. And so, I mean, I'm willing to continue this. It's not, not a huge amount of money. I'm not sure anyone from Cupertino will be able to attend. But I'm certainly willing to try one more year of this and, uh, see what happens.
Hey, Andy?
Yes.
I would assume that there's been some requests made of the, um, congressional, the federal level, uh, folks to see if they can compel membership of the airports.
And we are working on that.
Or compel the FAA. There's, there's almost no way to compel them unless you have the feds pushing on them.
So, um, yes, so the congressional offices are very much a partner and they want this to work. Their congressional offices here for Santa Clara and Santa Cruz counties are, are not happy that San Mateo County has a roundtable, which is the SFO roundtable. And they feel like, uh, the citizens in those, in our congressional districts are being treated differently. And I know that there's a lot of conversations with the airports and with the FAA to try, to try to help us be successful. This is also compounded by the fact that there are a lot more roundtables all across the country. And so the, uh, and also, as you know, that there's been a lot of defunding of various government agencies and, or just not reappointing. So it, our timing may not have been the best for some of these challenges.
Okay, so my, my follow-up question to you is, and, and I'll put this in the form of a request if Stephen's willing to support this. I mean, I haven't been to these meetings. I don't care to be our representative, quite frankly.
Oh darn, okay.
Sorry. This is a thankless job. But eventually, right? We would hope to see some progress on behalf of, of those residents who are impacted and those who may be impacted if, if the, if things change. I mean, um, uh, my, my request would be to, um, somebody, the prior committee, I'd like to know what has actually come of the prior effort, the prior committee. Did, did you say some things have happened? Let's hear about those things. And if they haven't, I think we ought to put a request back into the, uh, you know, our congresspeople to say, hey, this committee, uh, concluded its work on such and such a date, um, under, under, under the leadership of, uh, Chair Semidion. We'd like to know what concrete got done with the FAA. And, uh, we'd, we'd like to know what you as congresspeople then can push on. That work is done. We should see results from that. But before we, we go funding the next one, on and on and on, ad infinitum, we'd like to see some progress from the result the region has already, uh, put in to do this. So I, I'm, I can, I am supportive of continuing this for a limited time. Thank you.
Okay, I see, uh, John and Liang. John, you have your hand up, go.
Yeah, so are you hearing me?
Yes, go.
Yeah, so did I hear right that our contribution, is it per year or per six months to $17,000?
That is a, that is a year.
Year.
Great, so it's not all that much. Am I hearing it right that if the airport were to say it's happy to change its flight path, that that would go a long way in making progress?
Well, I'll, I'll just tell you what happened in Massachusetts is the airport and their roundtables working with MIT to develop a way to reintroduce the dispersion that spreads out the, spreads out the flights. It has not happened yet, but when I mentioned, oh, but that's a great idea, can we do it? They said, oh yeah, your airport just has to request it.
That sounds great. I would actually then be asking for that to be one of the, uh, short-term goals is to try to connect with the, the airport. If that, if that really could, you know, um, uh, put the ball down at the end of the field, you know, I would hate to have these months and years tick by and we miss an opportunity like that. And so I would like that to be kind of like a, a short-term goal.
Well, uh, it's been a goal to get San Jose and the airport to participate, but, um, so far, no dice.
So I do think it's important enough for us to, to continue to try for a limited amount of time that I don't think if, eh, we should be continuing if it truly doesn't show that it's, uh, making progress. So again, uh, like Councilman Singh said, I'd sure like to know what the, uh, results that have happened, um, are. And then the, uh, milestone stone goals, um, what they would be so that we can say, okay, this is what we hope to achieve in, in the next six months and in the next year. And then say, okay, that's worth continuing. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Liang.
Hello, hi. So I think from you said that FAA would only engage with Cupertino or any of the cities only through the format of roundtable. So it sounds like we do need to keep it going. However, I'm wondering whether we should reconsider their format. For example, the facilitator, how exactly what's, what do we expect of him? What's his scope of work? I'm unclear because especially when the beginning of the meeting, when stuff, when there are controversy, that's when a good facilitator shine. But I don't see that. And if the facilitator is expert, we are hiring him for his expertise, not for his ability to handle multiple cities, then what exactly we are expecting of him? And then we have now reduced the number of meetings. What that, um, contribute to the amount of dollars it does get paid? And then also I would like that maybe Cities Association could think about the engagement of, uh, residents. I think we need meaningful engagement of residents who a lot of times are more knowledgeable than a lot of council members who are on the roundtable. But then they are allowed to speak for 60 minutes at a time.
Oh, let me interrupt you for one second. Darcy, can you take over for a minute? I have to go do something. I'll be back in about two minutes.
Okay, so I hoped it would go forward, but I hope Cities Association can think about how to make it more effective, working with the facilitator and the residents. Thank you.
Hey, great. Any other comments from council? Right?
I'm, I'm curious to know if we have any public comments.
Kirsten, do you have any public comments on this item?
I do not have any email comments, Mr. Vice Mayor. And, oh, I do see one raised hand now. Lisa Warren is waiting to speak.
Okay, great, welcome Lisa.
There we go, thanks. So just in hearing this, I'm, I have a question about the participating cities. Cause I, I hear your concerns and I've hea- heard them for a while now about whether this is even an effective thing. I agree it needs another chance, but I'm wondering if the cost to the participating cities would go up? Cause I'm assuming other cities are having the same discussion. And let's say you have five cities, they forget it, we're done. Then their contribution financially has to be absorbed by someone. Is that the case?
Hey, well, thanks for your question.
That's all.
Great, well, you're well within your time limit. Is there anybody?
Sorry about that.
I would like to answer that question. Our mayor's back, so I'll hand over the meeting back to him.
Okay, um, so, you know, I'm, I'm perfectly willing to go ahead for another year. But frankly, I think Andy brought it up and Rod as well. We're really going to need a change at the top in order to have any progress, um, in compelling the FAA to do anything. We'll see what ha- happens with that later on this year. But for now, you know, I'm certainly willing to fund this for another year. I don't know if we need a motion for this?
We do.
We do, okay.
I'd like to request, I'll go ahead and, and make that motion. In addition to the staff recommendations, however, um, I'm going to ask that our council request, if this comes back to us in the future and we're considering it again, a, a balance sheet. So we in the public can have a sense of how these dollars are being spent. And I think for the amount of money that we're giving, um, you know, essentially to a consultant, it is fair to ask for a written deliverable so that again, uh, we and the public can know what's been happening. Now, this isn't to cast dispersions, it's not to demand results. I think informationally and educationally, if we're spending collectively quarter million dollars, it's probably good to have a report, uh, so that people would know what is the state of, uh, public sentiment with regard to airplane, uh, noise in the South Bay? And, uh, what have these jurisdictions that have banded together to have a voice in this conversation done at the, um, behest of the public and the public dollar? So those are my, uh, requests on top of the staff recommendations that A, we have a balance sheet available as to how these dollars are being spent. And B, that there be some type of written deliverable. I'm not asking for, you know, some, anything overly extensive, but of course, you know, if, if it merits it based upon the work being done, great, add exhibits and whatnot. But I think an executive summary is, in addition to maybe a 15 or 20 page report is, uh, perfectly reasonable to ask for. Thanks very much, that's my motion.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Can I make a friendly amendment?
Go ahead.
So can we also ask that, um, consider meaningful engagement of residents so that they are not limited to just one minute of meeting? Possibly forming submeet, subcommittee of residents to, to work with the, uh, facilitator, um, certain issues?
Well, I mean, I don't think we have that ability to, um, impose, uh, on the committee that they, uh, provide the residents with more time. I mean, that's a decision that the, that the chair makes and, and we elect the chair.
Otherwise, we are supporting moving forward with exactly the same format except, uh, asking for a budget.
Yes, that's right.
I'm happy to incorporate that request, uh, into my motion, uh, that we ask for, um, a, a more extensive, uh, mechanism for public engagement. Whether the committee, uh, decides to take that up is up to the committee and that's understood.
Okay, that's fine, okay. So we have the motion with the amendments, um.
Mayor?
Yes.
Want to confirm or change existing council representatives? That was possibly part of the motion.
So who are the representatives now? They're, um.
Councilmember Chow is the primary and Councilmember Willie is the alternate representative?
Right, I mean, I, I think the issue going forward, you know, even if we fund this, uh, we may not necessarily have someone to send to the meetings. I know, um, these are two council members with full-time jobs. And this is an issue with this meeting, the meeting time, which frankly disrespects both elected officials and. This meeting, the meeting time, which frankly disrespects both elected officials and the residents that, that want to speak. But again, the committee selected, selected the meeting time and uh, you know, one city cannot, doesn't have any ability to change that. Um, so no, let's not change the representatives. As the mayor, I'm allowed to go apparently. In place of the primary or the alternate and to the extent that I can do it, I will continue to go if possible.
Maybe they should start teleconferencing.
Well, right. That would be wonderful. The teleconference meetings would be great. And actually, uh, Andy, I think people can call into the meeting, can't they?
Yes, they can.
But yeah, there's no teleconference capability, um, although certainly. Uh, I'm sure City of Santa Clara has that capability. Uh, or you don't need, all you need is an internet connection. You don't need, uh, a- and that's a very good suggestion to. And I will bring that up the next meeting I go to if we can.
Yeah, maybe I, I can make it um, happen um, in the future. That for last time was my first week on the job, so.
Okay.
In the future, I can arrange.
Okay, so we have a motion with the amendments, um, I, and we had a second, I believe. Is that right, Kirsten?
Yes.
Okay, so I think you can do a roll call.
Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Singh?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, um, so we've been going for about two hours now. This next one. May be a long one, so why don't we take five minutes and come back at uh, s- uh, eight forty? Everybody back at six forty? I can't.
This was Rod. I'm here.
Okay, Leon, are you there? No? Darcy, are you there?
I'm here.
John, you here? Councilmember Chow, are you there? Councilmember Willie? Well, we have, we have a quorum. Okay.
Yeah, I'm here, but I'm not seeing on the screen.
Well, you see Deb's presentation on the screen, right?
Yeah, but usually I see the as participants on the side.
Oh, yeah, I think you gotta get exit fullscreen to do that. Up on the little right-hand.
Yep, you're right. Thank you. Perfect.
Okay, is Councilmember Chow back? Well, in any case, um, we have a quorum to can, to start, so we're here on to item thirteen. Fiscal year twenty twenty twenty-one city work program. Recommended action to adopt the city work program. So let's have the staff report.
Okay, so can you hear me okay?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so um, I'm gonna go through my presentation, but I say that with. That this was the proposed work program with substituted items from the nineteen twenty work program that didn't complete. That council decided to uh, onboard into twenty twenty-one. But I say that without um. At the time, knowing that COVID was gonna hit and its potential effect on our budget. So I, I'm gonna spend time going through it, but I would say that focusing a lot on the details at this point is not. Gonna be helpful because what I'm gonna probably have to do is come back to you with it. Um, uh, along with the budget discussion for twenty twenty-one. So I say that and I'll start. So this is my schedule, beautiful schedule that got blown out of the water. So um, as you can see, the CIP budget, but I'm just gonna focus on uh, the March thirty-first date for this presentation. We're still going in order. The way to look at it is the schedule is just kind of way stretched out. Because of um, our current situation. Not gonna talk about this too much, not gonna talk about that too much. So to start with this, let me. If someone wants to follow, oops, sorry. If someone wants to follow along with me in terms of um. Sorry, I'm going backwards. Oops. Um, you start with your attachment B, which has the details of what um, we took in and what we moved. And this first portion is by office rather than goal. Um, the items that were added by council uh, was two-way online communication. And a study session on regulating uh, diverse businesses, diverse, oops, I can't read my own. Um, I'll just do it this way. Versified retails, small retailers. Um, and then items that we traded and we did this in a combination of the si- the things where they're similar sized. And staff expertise. So we removed the new sister city relationship. And uh, removed the visitor centers, the visitor center from the Small Business Development Center um, item. So we just tweaked it if you look at, if you wanna look at your attachment B. For community development, most of the add backs were um, in this department. Um, so it, it was also an attempt to kind of level load the work also amongst departments. Um, so you'll see some of that here happening as well. Um, establish, establish pre-approved ADU plans. I'm just gonna hit on a couple of these. Of course, the Valco specific plan, um, the GPA or gateway process, the general plan authorization process. And then items we removed uh, to accommodate the additions were similar sized in totality, we thought. Um, conditional use permit evaluation and um, the R one ordinance. Um, community development, we also. Um, moved three items uh, to the Parks and Rec folks. Because it was basically the Parks and Rec Commission, I'm sorry, the Fine Arts Commission that was looking at this. Typically, um, the Fine Arts Commission is, is uh, facilitated by somebody from the Parks and Rec Department. So we moved those over for twenty twenty-one. For the rest of nineteen twenty, they are facilitated by the planning department. In Public Works, we added um, the traffic congestion map and um, identifying solutions. Um, we didn't really take anything out of removal because we had enough room and operations to do, to do part of this. And then um. Uh, so that's the end of the changes and the swap outs. If you then wanna look at um, attachment A or not. Um, now I'm trying to tell you what it looks like, the new items under each goal. Going forward for twenty twenty-one. So under public engagement and transparency. Um, I pull on item number one, just to let you know that um, the way the council left it. Um, at the end of the last session was for me to follow up with uh, Vice Mayor Paul. Um, and so uh, we left it on the um, work program. Um, these are the eight items that are under public engagement and transparency at the moment. Uh, let's see. Under transportation, the shuttle bus pilot program. And regional transformative transit project initiatives. Also, the details are on attachment A. Improving traffic flow and alleviating congestion as a subset of transportation. And you can see it there. Associated with this also is the expansion of the bike ped commission into. I forget what we called it, but basically multimodal or um. I forget what we called the commission, but we're working, we'd be mu- working on the Munich code to adjust, expand that commission. To include other transportation solutions. Housing, uh, now be patient because this goes on for a little bit. This is just the first part. Um, of course, a study session on the arena, next arena cycle. Housing strategies, uh, established pre-approved ADU plans. And then a continuation on, uh, if you recall, council wanted a subset um, called out specifically to help the homeless. Um, so we would review our health, housing and human services funding grants. Um, housing program for Deans College students. Um, research governors, one point four billion dollar pledge towards homelessness and uh. Transportation solutions for service providers, which also might be subject to some grant money. Under sustainability and fiscal strategy, um, as per council direction, we split it up and made it a little more descriptive. Typical sustainability and then fiscal sustainability. Um, you can see that the uh, property tax, I mean, uh, reviewing the property tax share um, and uh. Investigating other alternatives to city hall are still on there. Next, we have the quality of life and we split it apart between air quality and noise, um, as well as public safety. See, emergency services, yep. Uh, and then um, pollution monitoring, doing some pilots through some, adding some sensors to our. Current um, collection of sensors. Continue on with quality of life under recreation and uh, access to goods and services. Of course, the BlackBerry Farm Golf Course and its um, supporting system out there need work. Uh, the strategic plan for parks and recreation and a study session on regulating diversified retail uses. Access to goods and services as defined by, as defined under the quality of life goal. And then the last part of the quality of life goal has to do with um, a few more planning items. Heart of the city plan, Valco specific plan, um. Reviewing the environmental review committee and of course studying uh, the residential mixed use. Um, residential design standards. Again, I end on our uh, path forward towards a budget. Um, again, I would tell you that I think that we've been disrupted by COVID and so in the coming weeks. Um, not only would I re- review the nineteen twenty budget effects so far of COVID. Um, but also then what its impact would be, what's resulting impact would be on twenty twenty-one. And likely I would have to bring this whole work program back to discuss with council. Um, what the potential might be. If we all bounce back from it and we get, um, you know, financial support. From the different resources that are emerging now. It could be that, that I brought, bring back a full work program such as the one currently proposed, the, the one that I'm proposing to adopt. Um, so I'm still proposing you adopt a full work program. Um, in, so that we have, staff has direction for twenty twenty-one. But know that I could bring it back to talk to council more about it, should we need to um, make some changes to it. Any questions?
Uh, before we do questions, uh, Madam City Clerk, do we have any uh, uh, anyone from the public that wishes to speak?
I do not have any email comments and I do see two attendees. Waiting, but I, if you'd like to raise your hand at this time, press star nine if you're on a phone. And I don't see them raising their hands, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great. So we can uh, bring it back to council. Thank you, Deb, and uh, I'm sure we are going to uh. Have to think of modifying this um, based on things like revenue. Uh, but the, the one thing that we really need to be careful of is. Some projects have a timeline that we really don't want to interrupt. And I'm thinking of things like um, the library expansion, even though, you know, that, that's quite a bit of money. Um, there's a timeline there, so I don't think we wanna, I think we have to be cognizant of what. Can be delayed without much of an impact. can be delayed without much of an impact and what would cost us money if we do delay it.
Absolutely.
With that, um, let's bring it back. Uh, who wants to raise their hand and go first? Or I can just call on people. Uh, let's go from longest serving to least serving. So Rod, do you want to go?
Thank you. Um, I mean, wh- what I appreciate about this is we've had several prior really long meetings. And I think our comments have been incorporated for now. We could spend another three hours noodling on this, but I think, you know, the important discussion is going to come, right? We, we know we're going to have to refactor the budget. We know that our TOT is going to be down. We know that property taxes may falter. We know that business to business taxes may falter. Hard to say exactly, right? Property tax, probably not so much, but, um, we know there will be, uh, a substantial economic, uh, impacts. And we need to be prepared to, um, uh, uh, we're going to have to respond, uh, because at the end of the day, right, we need a, a budget that if we do go into reserves, um, doesn't, doesn't really, that leaves us in sound financial shape. And so I'll, I'll leave it there. I don't, I, uh, I respect Deb's interest in saying, you know, uh, we've had the detailed meetings, we've been through it line by line. Uh, let's, um, let's pass this and then get on with the, the harder work, which is to go figure out, uh, where revenues are going to be um, based on a scenario of doing this for three months and six months, uh, or whatever it is, I don't know. Um, and then, and then go see, go try to figure out, uh, given the timeline and revenues, um, you know, which, which items, uh, as Stephen said, right, are, are critical. I might have a different set than he is, but I, I don't think tonight's the night to, to go through and try to make, set those hard priorities. I do know we have, uh, city staff and we, we want to keep our, uh, city staff, uh, gainfully employed. I would think that an important thing to, to, to handle. I think we, uh, need to be thoughtful about how these monies that will be flowing in from federal state, uh, governments, uh, uh, impact us, uh, whether we're involved in administering that money or just helping to get the word out. So I'm, I'm, I'm going to withhold, um, trying to get into the details. Thank you.
Great. Okay. So I will point out that I'll give each council member no more than five minutes for their input. So next, um, Darcy.
All right. Thanks, Mayor. I, I agree with the general idea of let's keep this brief. We've had multiple sessions on this. Uh, with regard to the state of the, uh, draft, uh, plan as it stands, uh, I'm fine with the items, but I'm also fine with maintaining that flexibility, uh, in, in order to allow the city manager and staff, uh, to, uh, discharge their duties, especially given the fact that, uh, we have such an unprecedented public health crisis, uh, that we're dealing with here. And so I'll just leave my comments at that. Um, I, I think it's a very thoughtful, um, group of, uh, uh, of, of, of tasks that we've considered over the past, uh, several months. Um, I do want to say that our city manager has done a really excellent job in general of streamlining a lot of our processes, but also committing them to writing, um, as well as a schedule. And so, um, I think this is, uh, not the ideal point in, in history to be looking at the culmination of our very first, um, effort to define a city work program in this kind of manner. Um, but, you know, again, perhaps it is a good time in the sense that, uh, we're testing the robustness of it, uh, from the very, uh, very beginning. So I'm fine with all the items here, um, and with regard to some of the, uh, very, um, very pressing items, um, like homelessness, um, like the questions surrounding, um, you know, our balance, the economy, uh, we really need to be looking at what happens in the upcoming, uh, several weeks, a couple of months. Uh, and so I would just say, if we can add anything to this, it's the notion of having, uh, good flexibility and being able to, uh, revisit this, uh, and giving our city manager the appropriate amount of discretion to, um, make those types of recommendations and even, uh, moving an item or two here, uh, uh, as needed. So thanks very much for the work and, um, you know, hopefully we, we all get past this successfully.
Okay, great. Uh, Councilmember Chow.
So you are not commenting first?
Uh, no, I'll, I'll go, I, I already went. I, I said, I said all I had to say.
Um, I'll start. There is one minor comment about rent, rental, it's just the title. It should be, uh, about the swimming pool spatial district, right? It's not just the neighborhood. You might want to clarify that.
Point taken.
On the housing, I think, um, housing short, housing, uh, for housing strategies, I think, I want to clarify a little bit. I think we, the mayor has emphasized all along, it's not a housing shortage, it's an affordable housing shortage. So the housing strategy is, uh, all about affordable housing. And also for a city like us, we don't build seat, how, we don't build the housing. We can only regulate and we depend on state, federal and other funding to build affordable housing. So I think we need to emphasize that in our work program, maybe clarify in the project objective. So that we emphasize it's really the funding, the city needs funding. The legal cities, every year in their priority, they ask for more funding for affordable housing. They didn't get it, but the cities keep getting blamed for not building enough housing. But we need funding for that. And another thing I hope that we emphasize in our, our project objective would be job housing ratio, because this is something that the regional agency, the ABAC and TC, they aren't considered, but then they have thrown it out of the window. They are not considering the balance. So we as a city, that has been our emphasis, if, by even not, uh, not approving a lot of office like a lot of other cities do, we sacrifice, but then that's our value. So I hope, um, for example, under number one in, under housing in the project objective, um, which is regarding renal cycle, that's include, consider job housing ratio in there. And the number two for, for housing strategy, that's, uh, emphasize that once we need funding.
Councilmember Chow, there is a statement says including evaluating sites for potential upzoning and jobs housing ratio, ratio and statistics.
Yeah. So it's all, it all focused on housing. So I, I think we need to bring the discussion of, uh, housing and office, uh, ratio. A balanced, uh, housing and office ratio here when we consider this whole strategy. Because the region, the regional is only, only considers housing, 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 but office affect housing, housing affect of office, housing shortage is because of overdevelopment of office. So even though the regional agency are not emphasizing that, we need to include that in our study. Okay. And so for number two, housing strategies, I, I hope that we consider one thing is exactly what's the reality of funding situation for BMR housing when we talk about strategy. And then the second thing is, um, I hope we, I think in the past few years, this, it's on the city work program to revise the BMR menu to include a certain percentage for ELI and moderate income. That I brought up on February four, 24th also, that's still not included. It, we have been putting it on the, the work program, but we have not implemented. It could be under number two or could be under number three, but number three right now is just working with nonprofit. But if we can look at modifying our BMR menu, that means when the next project comes along, want to build along our transit corridor, we can require a certain percentage of ELI, which we cannot right now. Okay. So I hope that we include that in the housing strategy. And then another thing is, uh, the third thing is density bonus, um, ordinance. Our density bonus ordinance right now is not clear. How much extra height or waivers people can claim once they go beyond the ordinance, the, the, the limit, for example, they can go up to 35%, but maybe they added only one extra percent. But then they could, uh, claim a lot of waivers. Where does that make sense? I think other cities like San Francisco have more clear guideline and we need to consider, consider that so that our guideline give us the kind, uh, the kind, the percentage of, uh, BMR housing that we deserve. So that we don't provide relaxed data without extra.
Okay. So you're at five and a half minutes already. Are you done?
Okay. So I can, I have more, I can come back.
Okay. Uh, John.
Yeah. Okay. So, um, I think this is, this and the budget are, you know, two of our most important responsibilities to the, uh, community. And I realize that the near term in front of us with this, uh, uh, COVID-19 is really going to cause things not to play out the way we would normally expect them. So that being said, we're talking about the work program and we've got somewhere around or over 70 items. And they're all important to the community. But they all can't be number one priorities. So what I would ask, what I am asking is that between the five of us, we pick the top 10 items. Maybe we each pick two such that those items are going to really move forward. And I heard Councilman Paul mention the library, absolutely. But if all 70 are ranked the same, I, I just don't feel that at the end of six months, at the end of the year, we're going to be seeing the progress that we will say, wow, we really did what we started. Well, everything moved, but not very far for anything. So I'm as, I'm asking that we actually pull out or single out the top 10 items and that we actually ask for a quarterly update on those 10 so that we then can see the ones that are the most important to us are in fact significantly moving forward during each of those quarters. And, um, uh, uh, city manager had some comments there. Feel free.
Oh, I'm sorry to interrupt. I was just going to say that it, it does get a little confusing. But of course, you know, we're going to look at 1920 also, but of course the library and everything is moving forward because it's in 1920 and primarily I'm looking at 1920's effect, the income effect on 2021. So it's, it's a little bit of, I'm just trying to not mix up the fiscal years too much.
Okay. Um, so at any rate, again, my, my request for the council is that we do identify the top 10 and that we also ask the city manager to give us a quarterly update on those top 10. And I'll toss out that, you know, one of the highest ones, I mean, the mayor said that some things just can't wait. Absolutely. And I, I feel that, uh, VAALCO is so important to this community. We just can't sit back and not have a community engagement process that, uh, shows the developer what the community truly wants. Without that information, it's left up to him to decide with, with no, uh, community, uh, uh, input. And to us, to me, that means I feel we're failing our community. So that would be one of my top 10. And if we each pick two, then I'll pick one other one and make that the, the top 10 that we make sure make good progress. There's no guarantees, but that we, that the city makes good progress on those top 10.
So I think, I think we could all give Deb that feedback in our one-on-one and then this back as, um, you know, as we discuss the work plan in the future, because.
And then I can publish that back to everybody, ending up what that whole list looks like.
I, I think it needs to be stronger. I, I think it needs to be stronger than that. I mean, you know, yes, it's a one-on-one, but no, I don't feel that there is the, the, uh, importance and, uh, the ability for her, for the city manager to realize these are the ones that the whole council has said, top 10, these are the top 10, everybody got something. And those top 10 need to be moving forward as opposed to, uh, the one-on-one that just gets an update.
We, we will bring it back to the council, but in the meantime, you know, communicate what, you know, communicate with, communicate with Deb what your desire is and we will have it in a public meeting, you know, as.
And I have, but we're not making the progress that needs to be made.
Well, I mean, this just started, this, the whole COVID thing. I mean, um, but yeah, I agree. I mean, that would be one of my priorities as well. And I agree with Councilmember Chow when she brought up the issue, uh, with our density bonus and, um, that we should include something about jobs, housing balance. And as she pointed out, we do forego revenue by not, um, building excessive amounts of office like some of our neighbors are doing.
And I would encourage people to have that discussion now or, or wait to have it when we bring it back to priority.
Right. Yes. Uh, I see, um, let's see, Diane, you have your hand raised. Diane Thompson.
Hello, Mayor.
Hi.
And, um, City Council, yes, I just wanted to jump in, in response to Councilmember Willie's suggestion of prioritizing that that would be something that council would want to do, um, based on input from staff, um, understanding what projects are underway and what projects are urgent. And also, um, with the unknowns related to COVID, I think that there are, um, kind of too many variables perhaps at this time for the council to consider prioritization. And I would, um, support the suggestion that you wait on prioritization and just, uh, provide your comments to the city manager, um, in your one-on-one meetings.
Okay. Yeah. And I understand some projects, um, they can go in the planning stages, whereas construction may have to wait a little while to get started, but, uh, that we really don't want to delay, um, certain projects, certain public works projects.
Absolutely.
So with that, okay, Liang, you can have, anyone else want final comments? Um, Liang, you can go ahead with, uh,
Um, okay.
A couple more minutes.
So, yeah, I also think we do need some prioritization eventually, maybe not today. For example, under public, in public engagement, there are eight items. Similarly, under housing, there are like multiple items. So we, we may not get to all eight of them the next year. So maybe it's important to know what are our priorities among those eight, um, when the time comes. And then the final comment is regarding, it's, uh, in general for, we have a lot of items this year on homelessness, homeless program, housing program for Deansa student, the hygiene facilities and, uh, other things. However, I realize that in the past, the cities are not the agency that's providing this kind of social services. It has always been the county. I assume county gets special funding for providing social services. But they are not doing their job or they are not getting enough funding property right now. And now there are some of the responsibilities of fall, have fallen onto the cities. But we don't, we didn't get any funding from the state or the federal government to provide any of the social services, except the very minimal, the block, um, CDPG. To provide any of the social services except the very minimal, the block uh, C D P G.
C D B B block.
That's, yeah, that's very, very little. However, we are somehow being viewed as the cities have to do this, cities have to do that. So I hope among all the items for homeless. That's also include the. What's the, where, where exactly the funding should come from? If the county is supposed to provide the service that we are providing now, shouldn't we get the funding partially from the county? Because they are actually the agency that's funded by the state to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if this is necessarily for the work plan, but you're absolutely right. I mean, the state. Has said they're going to provide funding for homeless services. Uh, the county, you know, obviously the cities don't have the money. Um, I know people were commenting on. The covid crisis and rental assistance. Well. I mean, that's great, but obviously the city doesn't have the money to run out and pay everyone's rent either.
Yes, so we have the heart. So I think in addition of looking at all the services that we can provide that include. Looking at. Where the coming is supposed to come from, not just from the government's emergency um, agency, but.
Okay.
Where is the.
Fair enough.
Funding source.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, um. So the recommended action is to adopt the twenty twenty one. Work plan recognizing that uh. There probably going to be significant changes in the, in the coming. Couple of months based on. Uh. How long we're all shut down. Uh.
So are you making a motion?
Right, so I'll make a motion that we adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty one. City work program.
Can I ask?
Can I ask?
I'll second that.
All what I have mentioned. To clarify certain um, project objectives.
I was gonna ask that question a little different. What is the timeframe that it would be coming back to us so that we can set a priority? If we're not going to pick the top ten tonight. When would we be able to see it and uh, determine some, some type of prioritization?
Well, here's what I would suggest is that each one of the council members can tell me what their. Top ten, top two are in their one-on-one. I'm happy to publish it back to you all. And get it to a public meeting at some point soon. Um, I don't know when we're gonna be ready. I would say. I would say we'd have a really good handle on it by the time. Maybe this next order could lifted, which would be early May.
Yeah, I mean, as Diane pointed, this is really premature to. You know. To decide this now, we just don't, we just won't know for. You know, a month or so. You know, what the situation is. So let's not overthink this tonight.
Yeah, it sounds like there's a motion in a second, but I mean, respecting John's concern. Uh, and, and very briefly, I can do it in a minute. Um. This probably isn't going to deviate with regard to what I feel. Primary focuses need to be in the city. Uh, we need to get Valco resolved. We need to do something about transit. And clearly, uh, housing is an ongoing issue. However. Uh, that's clearly going to be in flux with regard to what's happening economically. Um, looking at what's happened recently uh, with covid. Uh, I think it's especially important that we focus on people's health. Uh, the item on secondhand smoke reduction seems awfully important. Uh, given that, anything having to do with air pollution, I know that's an ongoing issue. It uh, speaks to our um. Climate action plan as well. Um. On that topic, you have general health. Uh, we need to have better protocols, I feel, and just generally for reaching out to people and trying to figure out. You know, when you have a situation like this. Uh, how do you provide access to facilities? But in a way that will allow you to communicate with. Uh, your, your residents and constituents quickly and comprehensively. I mean, I think we should be talking about, you know, activating our block leader program. Uh, activating our uh, cert. Um, and, and other emergency relief disaster council volunteers. To try to really get a comprehensive type of outreach to the community, but that would need um, conservative effort. Um, and especially if we're able to take advantage of modern technology like we're doing here with this meeting and so many people are right now. You could probably address a lot of the um. Incipient and, and deeply entrenched mental health issues as well. Uh, with respect to people feeling isolated, but not just feeling isolated, but being isolated with regard to getting more of these communications. So that would be, well, i- i- if we were talking about just a high level summary of, you know, where, where people stand, th- this is where I would stand. In, in terms of what uh, I think our priorities need to be. And I would put transit in front of housing. Um, it, it's a, it's a matter of getting back and forth. Also, transit is changing very much. There are so many possibilities in mass transit. But the fact of the matter is, we have a confluence between technology as well as clean tech. Um, in, you know, personal transit and automobiles. And I think we should be taking a look at that as well. Thanks. I'll support the motion, by the way.
Okay, so. Can we do a roll call vote on the motion?
Wait, so um, I'd like to make a friendly amendment to include sir. Um, in the project objectives to include things I mentioned earlier. Like um, the job housing ratio, um. Funding for. Social services and funding for affordable housing and for B M R. Um. Include the B M R manual revision to include the required E I, E L I moderate income housing percentage.
Council member Chow, some of these things that you're mentioning are going to take quite an effort. So are you suggesting? There are new work program items that need to push off something else?
Right, we need to decide what to drop.
Include those in the housing strategies discussion to see those, whether those are necessary.
Well, what I'm responding to.
Our menu and the density.
Updating the B M R manual, for example, is going to be quite an effort. So what would, we would have to go back.
They should be considered in the discussion, whether we do it next year or not is part of the discussion. Right?
Hold second.
The housing strategy.
Hold second that we should have those.
Where um, the certain amount of B M R percentage of housing is also part of the housing strategy.
Can you, can you uh, reframe and kind of more, excuse me. Uh, succinctly say how you modify, how you would want to modify the housing objective?
Okay, so first amendment is for item one, the Rena. Study session that should include the job housing ratio. And second is the, of housing strategy, it should really be affordable housing strategy. And including discussion of funding. Because affordable housing really rely depends on whether we have funding available. And second is include the discussion of B M R menu to. Include the required percentage of E L I and moderate income housing. So this is a, this is a possible housing strategy to consider. Another third one is density bonus ordinance. Whether to clarify the requirement of, of how to implement uh, density bonus so that they won't be abused. So we actually get that we deserve. Okay? And then the next one is item.
Are we, are we not, we doing the work program? Is that what we're doing now?
Right, we're gonna have to start removing things then.
No, 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 these are. Housing strategies. Otherwise, what are you considering?
But, right, but we don't have to list everything we're gonna discuss.
If we don't.
I think all of these, all of these are worthwhile discussing under housing strategies. And we will. But this is, you know, an outline. It's not. I mean, I, I think you're trying to go in and do. And actually im- implement the work plan right in this meeting. I mean, I'm all in favor of talking about jobs, housing ratio.
Okay.
And funding and, and making it affordable housing, not just housing.
I think it just helps others to remember these are things to consider.
Well, I, you know.
Discussion, right?
But we're all, we're all gonna be there to help consider them.
Are we?
Yep.
Because by the time it brings back to the council, a lot of times. These i- items are already further down the way by implemented by staff. Right, so that's why I would like to um, include that so we don't forget.
Well, should we include it now or should we include it later when I have to bring this back anyways?
Okay, you can do that. So that's on the record that we.
Yeah, it is.
Included.
This whole thing is taped, yep.
Right, and I will support all of those things you said.
Yeah, and then another thing is the regarding items on seven, eight. These are for homeless services. I would like to clarify where this, the funding is supposed to come from for this kind of social services. Uh.
Right, yeah, you already mentioned that and that.
But you made the motion and making the amendment that maybe we should include that in the project of, objective of this item. Because right now the objective is just, oh, let's provide the service. It doesn't talk about funding, but that should be something we should try and figure out also. It's not only the funding from the governor's pledge. But also what's supposed to be the sustainable, continuous funding for this kind of service. Where, which agencies they went to and.
Well, I mean. The objectives, the project objectives are vague enough. That we can discuss all of this. I mean, they're intentionally not specific, so we. Have the opportunity to discuss all of these issues. You know, wh- when we get to them.
A lot of these. As I realized by the time it comes to the council. There is already a complete staff report with a lot of effort already put into it. We don't get to discuss it before a lot of staff effort has been spent on that. So I.
I'm telling you, I'm telling you that it's probable that part of this work program will not be executable anyway. So I'm gonna have to bring the whole thing back to.
All I'm asking is for this project objective to mention. Um. Look at the source of funding for such service.
I wrote it down. I wrote it down.
So I mean, council member Chow has a good point. Often we. We have our goals and then the staff comes back with a report. And it doesn't match what we thought, but they've spent so much time and effort on it. We're almost expected um, to pass it and approve it. Um, just because of all the effort that's been put in even. Now, I think things, you know, to be honest with Deb here, I think things. Are changing in that regard. Um, in the past, uh. We would not, I, I, in the past, I would. Agree, we need to be extremely specific. Um. But in this case, I think Deb, here's what, what we're saying here. And we'll direct staff because remember staff, you know, we don't, we don't direct staff directly.
Okay, so is you, I guess you can include it in the document or. On just put it on the record and then include it in the implementation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, there's a motion in a second. Can we have a roll call vote now?
Council member Chow.
Aye.
Council member Sinks.
Aye.
Council member Willie.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul.
Aye.
Mayor Sher.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, great. We are on to council and staff comments. Are there any more staff comments?
None from me, thank you.
Okay. Any, any other staff members? All right, council comments. Uh. Let's start with uh, John this time.
Under the last couple of weeks of shelter in place, uh, no comments is. Well, yes, I do have a comment and that is. I do think uh, uh, city manager is doing a, a very good job on the uh, covid nineteen. I think we uh, really need to uh, keep that as a high priority. Until the uh, emergency has uh, somewhat uh, been downsized. So we definitely need to make sure that that's a priority. And um, getting the information out, I also would like to see us. You know, um, trying to get uh, more masks uh, for people that need them. So that'll be it.
Okay, um, council member Chow.
Hi, so yeah, I'd like to thank all the staff members for continuing to work at this stressful time. And then also a lot of, of the healthcare and police fire. Um. Firemen, they are still working and. At this time, and thank a lot of community members who have donated the masks to the city and to our hospitals around here. Then it really, really appreciate all the effort. It seems right now Kaiser might have enough masks, but then. I'm wondering whether we need masks for. Um, cashiers and other healthcare workers who take care of seniors and. Thanks staff for coordinating a lot of this effort. And in terms of agenda item. I hope that during this time in the future council meetings, can we put the first item as. Um, update for covid nineteen in every meeting so that we could ask questions and then maybe. Um, talk about how we can do better, for example. Um, do better outreach to better through block leader program or other things. So that's a request for agenda item. And the second one is. I'm wondering. Do we, I think some companies have a hiring freeze. And I'm wondering we should consider um. Considering the letter from V G. Should we consider hiring freeze, spending freeze? Not signing new, new contract even though it's for the nineteen twenty year. Because as V G pointed out, our budget is one hundred forty million, forty-two million dollars. Uh, well, our hundred, budget is one hundred fifty million dollars, eight million more than our revenue. So we had to bring uh, eight million dollars from the reserve. Should we continue this kind of spending for the, this year, nineteen twenty year that we should consider? Um. Then another thing is uh. And really like this format, the of teleconferencing, however. We used to get paper copy of staff representation so that we could flip back on after the presentation. We don't have that available, so it would be nice if the staff presentation could also be posted that. It could be right before the meeting, but it's just posted somewhere so the council and public can access them during the meeting. Uh, thank you.
Okay, um, Darcy.
I, I, I just wanted to. Say a good job to a couple of our departments and thank you. First to the public works department. Um, a couple of weekends ago, I contacted our city manager. Um, with regard to uh, masks and P P E. And they were um, basically looking at a severe shortage. Uh, not just uh, regionally. Uh, or, or nationally, but very locally with regard to our local, uh, one of our very uh, close in proximity hospitals here. And um, public works was able to put together a couple of donation bins for masks and, and that um. Personal protective equipment or P P E. Uh, one's in front of city hall, one's in front of library. Uh, we've already received some significant uh, contributions, so thank you very much to. Uh, the public for pulling together for that as well. I'd also like to thank the Parks and Recreation Department or the Recreation and Community Services Department. Um, for um. Keeping updated on their website, um, and reaching out to the community with the various types of activities that they could be doing. I, I'd really like to um, you know, plead for people to observe the social distancing. Um. You know, requirements as well as making sure that your um, your kids are doing the same thing. Um, in, in, in these days, it is really critically important to have. Uh, the physical activity that the fields and our, our tracks. Uh, and you know, frankly, possibly other facilities if we could uh, do this properly, uh, represent. Uh, but unfortunately, as people are congregating and getting, you know, too close and not observing. Um, not just the, the stringent requirements, but the spirit of social distancing. We're having to shut down all, all these various facilities. Um. So I thank Parks and Rec uh, for working to put those resources online. And I would encourage staff to uh, keep doing that kind of outreach to our community. And uh, thank you very much. Uh, everyone stay, stay safe and stay healthy like everyone else has been saying.
Okay, thank you, Darcy. Uh, council member Sinks.
Yeah, I'd um.
Yeah, I'd uh, like to also um. Appreciate staff, a, a resident. Who's have been involved with emergency prep and the city made a request to us asking if. We had N ninety-five masks in storage and city manager. Uh, responded to that uh, with an inventory, we have some twenty-four hundred plus. Uh, unfortunately, uh, we found out that we had purchased all of them in two thousand five. And they have a shelf life of five years, and we're guessing it's because. You know, eventually the elastic wears out, and especially if these things are in, in, in our arcs in a storage. Uh, where temperature cycles a lot. But I know the city manager has been reaching out to uh. Hospitals uh, to see uh, if, if these are of uh, interest to them. Uh, the same resident that made the inquiry said, hey, you know, if. You need us to stitch new elastic on, we'd be happy to do that too. So um, I think there's a, a lot of uh, community um, spirit in, in trying to help here. I'd also uh, like to acknowledge the efforts uh, our county has made. And really uh, going the extra distance to. Lead and band together with all the other counties uh, in the Bay Area. I think it's helpful, right? To have a common set of guidelines so people aren't confused. You may live in one county and. Work in another. I think uh, they've. They've done, done an exemplary job in leading. I think uh, the state and, and Governor Newsom have shown. Excellent leadership. I could only wish that um. The federal government had been consistent and consequent and gotten on all of this. Uh, a month sooner, but I think um. You know, I, I have to give um, I have to uh. Uh, celebrate uh, if that's the right word, um, you know, the leadership uh, in our county. And, and in our state. Uh, for hopefully, um, you know, really flattening the curve. We know it's, we know. Um. Uh, we know uh, we're gonna have to continue to be vigilant and continue this for at least another month. And I only hope that the actions we took when we did. Uh, will avert many uh, folks being, becoming ill and uh, and dying because. Uh, yeah, in, in a lot of ways, right? Whether we're in our households or interacting. In public spaces or in stores. In some ways, we're all in this together and we need everybody to pitch in and do the right thing. Thanks.
Okay, so I will go last, um. I agree with everything that everyone said. I wanted to point out on masks, I reached out to. Um, Kaiser's government affairs person yesterday. Because there's been so much misinformation regarding masks. Um, so. You know, a lot of. Uh, the medical facilities. Um, can use N ninety-five masks that aren't expired, but the reality is. Um, most of the hospitals have sufficient stocks. They're not, I mean, they're being more judicious in giving out masks uh. In the past, they would give one out just because someone requested it, even if it was unnecessary. Uh, but just to make the person feel better, uh, but they're not doing that anymore. They're being careful. But, but there are um, sufficient quantities in the medical facilities. Um, but like the council member Chow said, perhaps some of these masks could be used for. Um, non-medical personnel, cashiers, things, uh, that, that sort of thing. So hopefully, they're all gonna get to the right place uh, in terms of the masks. And then I was asked by one uh, resident in email. Uh, I know last week, the March twenty-fourth meeting, we talked about. Um, any plans for rental assistance, and we are. Working diligently on this based on the feedback from the council. Of that we want to be helping um, a larger number of people and we wanna. Be working with nonprofits and corporations and landlords. Um, in order to come up with a good program, um. You know, as people have been saying throughout this meeting. You know, financially, all the cities are taking hits. And we need to be really careful about ensuring that we're spending all our money uh. In, in a wise manner to help the most people. And so that will be coming back hopefully at the next meeting. Uh, if we can get it all together in the next seven days. If not, it would be at, at a future meeting and. I think as uh, one. Communication we got, it's vital that. We get the information out to everyone that's been affected with job loss about. What, what's out there to help them, um? The eviction protection from the county, uh, SNAP. Unemployment, anything that can help them, they need to be informed. And I think that's something West Valley can do and that we can do as well. Uh, so with that, I don't have anything else, um. Anyone else have anything to say before we adjourn?
So I proposed two agenda items. Do I get second? One is let's put on COVID nineteen update in the, as first item for every council meeting from now until. Until this is over.
Let's take one at a time, so that.
Okay, um, Heather, how do we do that? Uh, do we just need at the beginning of each meeting, need to take a vote of the council to put it first? Is Heather still here?
Yes.
Okay.
You can just add one item, right?
Yeah, you, you, you need two council members to add an item to an agenda at this time, and then um, it's. The city manager and the mayor can, can consider putting that on the next agenda. And it would just be published with the agenda as a notice.
Right, I, I mean, I can add it to the agenda myself, right? Yeah, I, I'm happy to do that. I think that's, that's a great idea. So, yeah, in the future. For the pandemic, we'll make a city manager report. Um, part of the, you know, one of the first agenda items after.
And then public can ask questions, we would be, be able to respond.
That's true, cuz that's an agenda item, we can respond on that. Okay, what was the second one?
And the second one is um, let's consider possible hiring freeze, spending freeze for the current fiscal year because. From V J's uh, analysis, we are. Eight dot million dollars in, uh, in negative this year. We are drawing our reserves. Should we continue this spending or look at priority? Of course, I agree that. Library should still continue, however, maybe we can be eased up on pavement.
Can I? Can I suggest that part of the city manager's job is to come back and make recommendations on? What, how we would currently address the nineteen twenty budget and then the twenty twenty-one budget?
So we are looking at not spend, going all the way for nineteen twenty, right?
Not necessarily, yeah, not necessarily.
Right, I, I wouldn't wanna necessarily have a, you know, hiring freeze. If we lose people in a certain department. They may have to be replaced, and the council has.
That's true.
Am I right? The council has to approve. Um. Every new full-time employee, is that true?
Can I note that this is just whether we're gonna put the agenda item on or.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe not the hiring freeze, but then I hope that there will be an agenda item we can discuss. Um, spending priorities.
Yeah, I think we can. Yeah, um, Deb, let's put an agenda item um, regarding. Your whole effort, um, what did you call it?
Recessionary budgeting.
Recessionary budgeting. I think that would be a good agenda item to talk about.
We have to do it when I'm, when I have enough data though, so we need.
Okay.
I'll try and help place it somewhere, but.
Uh, but recessionary budgeting is talking about um, a projection for next year, so I'm talking about.
No, that's not true.
No, 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 it's. It's for this year too.
True.
Okay.
It's nineteen twenty and twenty twenty-one.
So sure, I would support putting a recessionary budget item when appropriate and not, not in June, but.
But in May, it's too.
In May at least.
But in May, it's already too late because nineteen twenty ends in Jo- June.
But remember you.
So are we, I guess the next question is, are we continuing the spending pattern? Right now, are we expecting to continue the spending pattern as? Business as usual in April, May and June?
That, that's again, hard for me to answer without doing the studying of the financial system, so.
Especially capital projects.
Request be able to bring back.
Why, why do we need to wait until May to answer that?
Cuz your biggest cost is labor. Your biggest cost is actuals. It's labor, it's not capital budgets, it's not the library expansion, it's, it's.
That's right, it's our, it's staffing.
I thought it's capital projects.
And I'm, I'm sorry.
It can waste by a company.
No, no, Heather, Heather has a good, but we, we cannot be discussing this here, it's not agendas.
Okay, so we discussed it maybe next Tuesday? Because we can't discuss now.
I will not be ready.
It's okay, we just, we'll be discussing whether there is a need to consider it before May.
I'd like for it to be database, data-driven, so um, I will not be ready on April seven. I already have a task to bring back on April seven, which is a whole plan for West Valley, city managers, loans, there's.
Oh, my concern is we will sign new contract in the next two months. That will commit us for spending, certain capital spending for millions of dollars.
How about this, I promise that we won't and bring it back to the council.
Okay, that's good.
How's that?
Yeah, that's good.
Well, I mean, already approved projects that are funded, um, you know, I wouldn't want you to stop those anyway.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I have to say that if we, if, if. You know, given that it takes, there's a big flywheel in starting and stopping projects. The, the last thing we wanna do is have people just sit on their thumbs and get no, no progress for it. I mean. We wanna contain, continue to pay our staff. And so it, it makes sense to, to um. Have the city manager come back when she's ready, when we have data and we know what's going on. Uh, not just artificially constrain her uh, with a, a budget.
I'm talking about maybe it's a contract with outside consultant not existing.
I mean, there may be, but it may, I mean. Uh, yeah, so I don't think I should say anymore.
Okay, yeah, it's not agendas.
This because everyone has an opinion.
Okay, all right, so. Is there anything else before we adjourn?
Yeah, I wanted to thank our I T staff, who's been working overtime and coming in, doing a great job and coordinating these meetings.
Yep.
Yeah, you know, th- thank you, they have been so awesome and. I was talking to another council member in a, in a East Bay city. And she said, oh, we canceled all our council meetings. Our city manager says we don't have the ability to do any teleconferencing. And I go, wow, you know.
Oh.
Don't, please don't hire our people away.
And let me tell you, I just wanna make one last, one last comment. Um, the last several weeks when we've been doing virtual E O Cs, Emergency Operations Center work and. I'm just so appreciative, the staff is so flexible. Um, so with, we've got a great I T department, but without people willing to adapt to new technology. To do their jobs like virtual inspections, we would not be here. And I'll tell you, we're leading the pack. Ben Fu is like teaching other cities how to do this. So um, let's just say that innovation comes from. You know, not a, a great I T department and people willing to use it and try it, so. Um, we're, where we are because of the whole team, I'm just really appreciative.
Okay, so we're an hour over where we're supposed to be.
Thank you.
All right, so adjourn, I don't have my gavel, but I, I will adjourn it with a.
You need your travel gavel.
With my La Croix can. Adjourned.